All right, welcome everybody to our June meeting. Glad you all could be here. I'd like to lead off with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay, like always, a very busy schedule tonight. So the first thing on our agenda is a public hearing on the historic district overlay. So I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Lydia, can you give us a brief intro and then we're gonna go into public comment?
Sure. So as we've been talking about for a while, the state and federal government per our application request expanded the historic district in 2021. And we are now faced with the question of what to do with the historic district overlay, which is our zoning code law that helps protect the buildings in historic districts. There's two things at play. One is Chapter 64, which is our historic demolition law, and one is Chapter 120-39, which is the actual historic district overlay. And the best, forgive me if all of you have heard this before, but I'm just gonna reiterate it. The best way to describe it is using an analogy of think of the historic district overlay, which is the full boundaries of the district, as a forest. A forest of old growth pines, say. It is mostly a forest of old growth pines, but of course it is not only old growth pines because other things grow in there. And so the idea behind the historic district overlay is that generally, all of the buildings help create a feeling of a village neighborhood that looks and acts a certain way. And what the historic district overlay does is it allows the planning board to have authority to review any major projects going on on any of those sites to make sure that they're in integrity with their neighbors, their integrity with the overall intention of the historic district, et cetera, et cetera. Also, say if a building in that district is demolished, it's only happened three times in our history, then it is replaced with something that is in integrity with the neighborhood. So it just makes sure that the historic district continues to look and feel the way that we know it to be. Chapter 64 is more specific. It's about the individual trees in that forest. So Chapter 64 is designed to protect demolition, or prevent demolition really, of significant contributing buildings in the district that help create the overall feeling of the district. So what we have, the draft legislation that we're discussing tonight is to expand the boundaries of the district to match the federal and state district that we requested they create, which is that pink map on the left. You can sort of see it's just a big splotch right there. It is in comparison to the historic district overlay that was identified with the 1993 comprehensive plan, which is the one on the right. It is not exactly a match up with the former historic district, but that's a separate issue. And then contributing buildings are, we decided as a group in the legislation in front of us, are those buildings in that district that were built on or before 1945, that have not been significantly changed in order to make them non-contributing. It's a little technical, so just go with the idea that basically post-war and prior is what we're talking about. Or up to the war and prior. So you know, Little Cape Cod's and all the rest of it, depending on when they were built, are part of the, are contributing members of this district. I think that's a good overview. Yeah?
Well, the age of significance or whatever it is is 1930.
Well, currently it's 1930, right. The state and the federal district actually has expanded their definition of contributing to up to 1970. Some historic architects who live and work in the village made a very compelling argument that because we actually don't have any really truly spectacular examples of the era from 1945 to 1970, that you know, having those be subject to historic demolition laws was inappropriate. So we backed off the historic demolition law to only include buildings up to 1945. That being said, the entire district, the entire federal state district is what we are discussing to become part of, to be the new historic district overlay. So once again, forest versus trees. I hope that's clear.
Okay, you're good. Thank you, Lydia.
Yep.
So this time we're gonna open it up for public comment. I'm gonna remind anybody who wants to speak, you're limited to three minutes. If it's been spoken before, you're still welcome to come up and say it's been spoken before. All right. And, but please keep your comments brief and direct to the issues that will pertain to tonight's discussion. With that, we're open for public comment.
I'd like to speak.
Come on up. Identify yourself, name, address.
Huck sent me a series of photographs in advance of this meeting, so I'm just gonna put them on the screen for him.
Could you put up the ranch, the 73 ranch that you want to put in the historicals?
I'm finding all of your pictures and I'm going to, we can sort of mess with them as we go. That's yours. Is that one? Oh, there it is. There we go.
Nice. So we have three minutes?
Three minutes, Huck.
Okay. I am adamantly opposed to the expansion of the...
Excuse me, could you identify yourself?
Okay, Harriet Hill, Rhinebeck, New York, 6484 Montgomery Street. I am adamantly opposed to the expansion of these three properties into the proposed expanded historic district of Rhinebeck. I'm talking about the ones on the north end of Mulberry Street that are across from the fairgrounds. These houses were built in 1983, 1948, and 1973. The 73-built house is the property to the north, closest to the Duchess County Fairgrounds line. This two-bedroom ranch modular is clearly not the highest and best use for this property. Ultimately, it will be replaced and demolished. Will villagers' authorities want to know which factory in New York or Pennsylvania this modular unit was fabricated and brought to the village in a flatbed truck before issuing a demolition permit? These were the kind of issues that Stickles had to deal with. My understanding is that the land on these parcels had a number of greenhouses that were part of the violent production in the village, Rhinebeck Village. Significantly, furthermore, there were as many as 52 greenhouses in the village. They were part of a significant local violent production in the first half of the 20th century. To my knowledge, none of these greenhouses exist today. Should any parcels that had greenhouses be included in the newly expanded historical district? Why are just these three properties being included and singled out in the proposed expanded historic district? I was informed that this would be the logical extension of the district down to the Duchess County Fairgrounds land on Mulberry Street. Following this reasoning, why not extend the proposed historic district to the north to include what is now Fosters at the Fair? This was previously the residence of my ancestor, Garrett Van Turin. He was born in 1785 and was a legal advisor and private secretary to Edward Livingston of Louisiana Purchase State. Livingston was Jackson's, Andrew Jackson's Secretary of State from 1823 to 1829. Additionally, there is a photograph of his home in Sarah Teigen's History of Rhinebeck. One of those things here.
Yeah, yeah.
Lastly, he was also a sheriff of Duchess County and town supervisor of Rhinebeck. So my understanding that he also had an equity interest in the Beekman Arms and many other Rhinebeck properties. This begs the question, why shouldn't the land under his house, his house on Fairgrounds property also be included in the historic district? In summary, expanding the historic district to include these mentioned properties is an obvious diminishing of the value of this real estate. This could almost be construed as a form of spot zoning. Thank you for reading and considering the content of this letter, which I believe raises significant concerns that is proposed, that this proposed expansion is prejudicial to the existing property rights of these three parcels. Can I see the pictures again?
Yeah.
Have I gone three minutes?
Yes. So there's one...
This is what, this, you guys consider, that's 1948, older than the one Stickle, you're letting them demolish, right?
Younger, actually.
Younger.
The several properties that were...
You're correct. And then the other one, there's one more.
Yeah.
1983. That was Joe Conveney's house, 1983. That's gonna be a historic house, couldn't it, right?
No, actually, that house is actually not gonna be a non-contributing member of the district. So there's a difference between the overall district...
Why is that house excluded?
Because it was built past 1945. It's not even part of it.
Well, that, the other one was 1973.
So...
73 Ranch.
Right.
They up in a truck, they set it down. And that's what you're putting in the historic district.
Right, so that house isn't a contributing member of either the federal district or what we have proposed. It is, it is part of the overall district, as in like, it is one of the trees in the forest.
Because you wanna square the thing off to the Fairgrounds fence.
No, we wanna square it off actually to the property, where did I just put it? No, we're not doing anything. The state and the federal government already passed this district right here.
Well, who brought them in anyways? You guys brought them in, right?
We brought them in, yeah. We requested them to do it in 2019.
For that?
No. For this, so look, so Huck, just take a second. See, this is your mother's property here.
Yeah.
See how it extends out here to Mulberry?
That's right.
So what this is doing is it's capturing everything up to there. So if, say you do tear down one of those properties, which under this legislation you can do without a historic demolition permit...
Do you know what, I can do that, I can tear it down without it?
You can take, yeah, that's what this legislation is proposing, that you can tear down those houses without it, but whatever you replace that house with does have to go in front of the planning board.
Which is standard zoning.
Yeah.
And one thing about zoning, Mike, and I don't quite get it, you cannot legislate taste on zoning. You can't. Like when Stickles had that thing, where they could do a big Victorian, old Victorian or what, you can't legislate that.
That's not taste, that's actual architectural styles.
Tread the fine line here.
Okay.
So Huck, let me, I need to understand your issue. Because we're saying either non-contributing because they're post-1945. So therefore they don't apply to the demolition law.
I don't think it should be included in any historic...
So your issue is they shouldn't be into the historic district that is currently defined by the federal district.
Well, because you brought them in, you guys pointed them in that direction.
No, I think they, they did the survey on themselves and came back with the recommendation. We didn't point them.
So we apparently, I was not here, we used a Duchess County grant to hire a historic architect, preservationist specialist, and that person developed this map and the 150-page application that went to the state, that the state passed, and then the state sent it to the federal government, the federal government passed. So with our approval, back in 2019. And then the federal government, the state passed it in late 2020, and the federal government approved it in 2021. So this, what we're looking at right now is the state and federal historic district. That is what it is. So the question is whether or not we're gonna make our historic district overlay mirror those boundaries. That's the question at this point.
And I think, I think to be clear, even though the houses are in the district, the historic rules do not apply to those houses. So if somebody wants to knock them down or change them or something, they can. It would only be if those houses are removed, then you'd have to do a building...
Well, removed or significantly altered.
Significantly altered.
Then they would need to go in front of the planning board for whatever it is...
For a historical, right?
They would need to go in front of the planning board for site plan approval to make sure that they're under Chapter 120-39, which basically requires that they're in...
Character?
That they're in charact, thank you, there's specific language, I don't remember what it's called.
What is that?
It's in charact, so it's not out of...
So you're legislating taste, basically?
It's not out of conformance with the rest of the book.
You're legislating taste.
That law has been on the books for decades. We're not legislating taste, we're legislating architectural styles. And I, I hear you, that you think that architectural styles is taste, but that's what we're doing.
And it doesn't protect these houses, though. These houses have no...
Yeah, if they're built past 1945, they have no...
Have no sort of value. And if they're not, they have no value, it would only be their replacements that would have to be in character with the historic district. So you hopefully wouldn't end up, you would not end up with a modular ranch, you'd end up with something more in character with the village.
It puts you in front of the planning board for site plan approval.
Just site plan approval, there's not, is there a historical overlay on it, though?
Yes.
You're in it, they are, but you have to go in front of the planning board for approval.
Okay. So this can be ripped down, right?
That can be ripped down.
And the one next to it, too?
As long as they're built past 1945.
Yeah.
You just need to go to the building department for a demolition permit. Yeah.
I think it's not as bad as you were fair.
Yeah. I'm sorry that I didn't...
Well, my reason, I don't know why you didn't run the thing up to the fairgrounds and get a real historical.
Well, I mean, the fairgrounds is a whole different kettle of fish, but we can talk about that. And there's been concerns about why we didn't come in down...
Because they would have protected, they would have fought like cats and dogs.
Well, yeah, and there's been some concern about why we didn't extend it down here to Mill Street in order to include the Benner House. So you know, there's, there's lots of questions about ways that if we do this again, we can continue to expand the district. But right now, this is, this is woke, is in front of the state and sets, and is now in front of us.
The larger pieces in the, in our planned residential district, which would allow for multi-unit, a mix of multi-units in single families and two units and things like that, so if we would, it would be kind of charming to continue that kind of historic flavor on Route 9, you know, past Platte Avenue going up on, you know, like in Niskiun or Saratoga, you have the, the big, this, you know, nice-looking homes that are kind of in character historically with the area, and then also have that on Mulberry, and then maybe have your multi-unit inside that piece, if whatever happens with that.
I have no idea what's gonna happen.
No, I'm not saying...
I don't really have anything...
I'm just thinking that that parcel is like, is a parcel that's someday, you know, it is in the PRD because it's over six acres. So our PRD allows for that, allows for 8,000 square feet, you take, it allows for multi-units and things like that, yeah.
I get it.
So you might wanna put the, the townhouse of the multi-unit inside that piece, and then have maybe the more, the larger homes going up, you know, going up Route 9 and maybe perhaps up Mulberry Street just for these three pieces right here, and then you have the more denser stuff inside.
So Huck, did we answer your issue regarding those homes?
In what?
In regard to the homes, the pictures of, did we answer?
Well, you can answer my question about that I can get, I can, those three houses could be demolished.
And then you're in front of the site, the planning board for whatever the replacement would be.
And I would imagine that the historic folks on the planning board would be delighted if we demolished those houses in place of something more character with the rest of the road.
You would think so.
Yeah.
But they are, it would be. So I won't have to figure out what factory built that house, whether it's Pennsylvania or Chelsea Homes?
You're in the clear, I'm out. Yeah.
It'd be interesting if you did, but I'm ready to hold you to it. Okay? I'd like to move on, Huck. Okay? Thanks, here. Anybody else?
Who do I get the letter to?
Me. Thank you. Actually, we're two. Sorry.
Any other comments on regard to the historic district overlay? Going once? Going twice? Close. All right, so from a board point of view... Just FYI, we had bets on how long the meeting was gonna last. I just lost.
Do you wanna close the public hearing?
Yes. No, we're gonna keep, because we need the legislation.
Oh, yeah.
So what we still need to do is have the draft legislation up to the board and out to the public for review, and then we need to come back...
Yeah.
And vote, and vote and comment on that legislation. So I'd like to make the motion to keep the public hearing open until we set the next meeting time, which we can discuss now, maybe.
That would be great.
I understand you're not here.
I'm not here for the July meeting, and so I would be grateful if this board would consider holding this vote on Tuesday, June 27, because the planning board would very much like this question resolved.
I'm gonna be out of town with my family, but I could, I could join remotely.
Okay, if we need you, yeah.
It's okay with me.
You can do it, right, can you do it?
I think so.
If it's summertime, I know.
Okay, and I'd like to make a motion to have a special meeting on June 27, 6:00 P.M.
Seconded? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, so...
Do we wanna go through the seeker stuff or not? Why don't you all take a look at it? I sent it to you, and just let me know if you have any comments. I'll make sure that the final legislation, final proposed legislation is on your desk by tomorrow closing business.
Yeah.
There's a, just so all of you know, Duchess County Planning had a couple comments, real knit and nap, but it does change the language, so...
And that question about the, is it the Benner House or the Better House?
The Better House.
Yeah, so do we have to have an explanation for why that's not included in the overlay?
So it is in the overlay, so...
Or why it's not contiguous with the...
So the Benner House and then, the Benner House, this little triangle down here on Mill Street, and then this guy up here, whose name I don't remember...
That's the Maples, right?
That's the Maples, yep. They are two of the five individually listed properties on the federal, on the federal and national register. The other three are inside the historic district, the historic district overlay. And so even though they're not contiguous, they are considered to be part of the historic district, simply because they're individually listed.
Thank you, not so, Gary, you made a motion to keep the public hearing...
Yes. I'm gonna amend the motion to keep the public hearing open to...
I need a second over that.
Yes, I know.
I'll sign it.
I'm gonna amend the motion to keep the public hearing open to June 27.
Yeah.
Meeting is, meeting at 6:00.
Great.
So I just need a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. We're done.
We're done. All right, thank you all.
Thank you all. Next on the agenda, public comment. Is there anybody here for public comment?
Yes.
Polly? Come up and same thing, address who, what, where, and three minutes. Yep?
Starting now. My name is Polly Kaplan. I live on South Parsonage 52. Steve Rosenberg was planning to be here but had to be out of town and asked me to read this, and I thank you for the opportunity to share our thoughts about the composting This is a resolution from the concerned people of Rhinebeck thanking Vanessa Bertozzi and Climate Smart Rhinebeck in supporting development of a composting site. Whereas Village Trustee Vanessa Bertozzi has been a true environmental leader spearheading the Climate Smart Rhinebeck initiative, achieving bronze level certification in New York State's Climate Smart Communities Program, providing annual reports on progress toward meeting village climate goals, initiating Bike to School Day and the walking school bus, and completing a natural resources inventory. Whereas Trustee Bertozzi and Climate Smart Rhinebeck's compost subcommittee responded to residents' requests for help composting food scraps by creating a successful pilot project. Whereas a growing number of municipalities, including our neighbors to the north in Red Hook, recognized the benefits of composting. Whereas during the 10-month composting pilot project, 100 households and six businesses diverted 20 tons of food scraps and reduced CO2 production by 40 tons, the equivalent of taking 100 cars off the road. Whereas Bertozzi, the subcommittee, and the village's engineering firm conducted in-depth research and developed well-conceived plans for a municipal composting facility. Whereas they also secured two grants totaling $300,000 to construct and operate a composting site at the village highway department. Whereas the increasing urgency of the climate crisis will require individual communities as well as nations to find ways to reduce their carbon footprint, and whereas solutions will require constructive discussion, compromise, and problem solving. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the following residents of Rhinebeck wholeheartedly thank Village Trustee Bertozzi and Climate Smart Rhinebeck for their efforts. Be it further resolved that we encourage our friends and neighbors to engage in thoughtful conversation, and be it further resolved that we urge our elected leaders to strive to find a way to construct and operate a composting site serving the village and town of Rhinebeck. And this is accompanied by the signatures of 91 residents. And on a personal note, I just have to say that I was very frustrated and disappointed with how the opponents to this project and how the town handled the challenges. I wish that everyone had been willing to work through this a little more cooperatively so that it just wasn't killed immediately. So, thank you.
I am trying to figure out a plan B. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Over.
Elmer, Popco Village Green. I just had a couple of comments here. One is community choice aggregation. I brought this up with the mayor, I don't know, two, three, four years ago, and I think it was raised again at the January meeting, and we were told that this was going to be looked into, so I'm hoping to get a report, you know, what is the, what is the, you know, progress on this report. I know that it's not going to save me a tremendous amount of money because I don't use a lot of electricity, and I know that two-thirds of my bill is Central Hudson and not the electricity itself, but I think it would be a good thing because it would allow me to ask for, for 100% renewable, and I think that would push us in the right direction, and that's what the town did. They made, they made 100% renewable the first, you know, the option, and then you could change it if you wanted to opt out, or if you wanted to go 50%, and I think that would give a lot of, it's the opportunity without having to do the research, without having to worry about fees for joining or fees for pulling out. And this, this community of choice, the way the town signed up for it, you can opt in or out anytime without fees, so it just seems like a win-win situation. The other thing is on composting, I'm wondering if we should maybe expand the way we look at it, and maybe these ideas have already been addressed, but I just haven't been at the right meeting. I'm wondering if we should take a wider scale approach. How many sites would we need in Duchess County? Where could they be strategically located? Does it make sense for each community to do their own? Is that the best way to do it? I don't know of the answers to these. What happens if we can't move the compost? We already had that issue with mulch, and I have no idea how easy it is to sell compost versus mulch. I'm also concerned because, because the good, the positive... I'm also concerned because, because the good, the positive thing is the 100 people that participated in the pilot were really interested, invested in this, but what about the rest of the people? I live in Village Green, and we have recycling, and we have this huge, large container for recycling, and it's very unclear what you can put in and what you can't put in, but there are a couple of things that are very clear, one is no plastic bags, and the other is to break down your cardboard boxes, and every time I go to recycle, the bin is filled with the plastic bags, and people don't break down the boxes. So what happens if that's the quality of the compost we end up getting, are we going to have the, you know, the money and the wherewithal to make sure that composting is done correctly? So there's just questions like that that we might look into, and maybe it would make more sense to do this on a bigger scale, a bigger scale, like a county scale rather than just trying to go it alone, just some thoughts I had on that, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I respond? So Eleanor brings up the community choice aggregation, and this is something that we've been really interested in, we've been following what Kingston is doing. In Kingston, they passed a really innovative local law for their CCA program that enables, this law enables them to do even more than just solar or other renewables as a source of your electricity. So, I'm looking at inviting a representative from that group to come and actually give a presentation, so hopefully this summer, we can schedule a time for them to come to a village meeting and share information about how it's going in Kingston, because I feel like if we're gonna, we're gonna create a law, an enabling set of laws to be able to do this, like how could we even leverage that to, to approach other climate-related projects and help the community get savings? The whole concept behind community choice aggregation is that it's municipality passing this, so you're really talking about almost like bulk group purchasing power, that's the concept behind CCA. So, stay tuned, I'm hoping we can come and have an interesting discussion about this soon.
I was just gonna add my voice, but I don't need to.
Phil Don, Dino Lynch, thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, I'm gonna close the public comment section and we're gonna move on. Next is a presentation, we have some visitors here this evening from Archtop Fiber, myself along with Rick Lewick and our DPW and our chief water plant operator and anybody who was, you know, kind of looking into what we can do to advance technology here in the village of Rhinebeck to provide fiber optics, internet, and telephone service in a buried fashion throughout the village. And Archtop Fiber met with myself and several of us, as I mentioned, as well as the other municipalities to talk about their plans for the future for doing that. We've met with them on a series of meetings right now in terms of what their plans are, and I'd like to have them come forward and share to the public what they would like to do. Yes, yep. Do you need the laptop hookup? You wanna show the charts that you sent us all?
Oh, yeah, that'd be a great idea.
Sure.
Do you have a laptop that you can have?
Yes.
Do you want to introduce your team and then?
Sure, yeah, well, he's handling the tech side, I'm Sean Mackay, I'm one of the founders of Archtop Fiber, I also happen to live in Rhinebeck, the town, not the village, but literally just over the border. New resident, but a longtime Hudson Valley fan, I guess I would say, I've been coming here, I was born and raised in Harlem and been coming up here my entire life. Just a little bit, talking a little about who we are and sort of what our plans are, and then we'll get very specific with what we're gonna do in Rhinebeck. We are essentially a group of old friends, we have been in the telecommunications and broadband industry for many, many decades, the three original founders, myself, Jeff Demond, and Lenny Higgins, for more than 30 years. We have built fiber optic systems in such strange places as Santiago, Chile, down to Tierra del Fuego, the entire state of Montana, the entire state of Wyoming, about a third of Colorado, most of the Midwest, the central Midwest from Minnesota on down, and also well-saw Krakow Poland after the wall fell, so we have a diverse background. It was, most of it was through a company called Brezner Communications that was founded by a man named Bill Brezner, sort of an icon in the industry, he passed away in 2009, and it was a family-run company and the family decided to sell, so the management team stayed together and had done a couple of projects, and this is really our swan song, I have been for a year and a half, sort of planning on it, and we can sort of show you the, sort of the rest of the team, but I would say it is a $350 million privately funded expansion of broadband, a competitive broadband, fiber optic to the home network across the Hudson Valley from the Berkshires to the Delaware River. It involves the latest technology, right now with, with spectrum, you get a little less than a gig is their fastest speed. Our network, it's something called XGS Pond, it's available in Seoul, South Korea, Tokyo, Seattle, but nowhere in New York yet, it will be provisionable up to 10, 10 gigs. It will be a competitive service, so economics is such that it will be competitive to spectrum, so priced lower than spectrum is what you can read into that. There are a couple of things that we will talk through in this, but ultimately, we would like to get started right here in Rhinebeck. We are local, we are the first tenant in Kingston at the IBM facility, which has been fallow for close to 30 years also, and we've taken the first 45,000 square feet, hiring 100 people, we have just hired our 30th. Again, I'm Sean Mackay, Tom Weckeser is also a lifelong Rhinebeck resident, Rhinebeck person, some of you may know him from his frontier days, and Bill and Scott are also on our team, both on the technical side, and again, we'd like to show you really a sort of a top-line view of what we hope to do in town, and it's actually pretty exciting, it's using a new technology called microtrenching, which cuts a very, very fine line and creates absolutely no mess. It is an environmental option, it is all dialectic, we pump light down a glass tube, so there, if you look at the cable plant, every 150 feet, there's a power supply, and actually cable is usually the largest electrical user in any footprint because of that, we don't need any electricity, the only electricity we use is every 20 kilometers, we put a hub site that throws fiber out along those lines, about 20 kilometers. Let me take you through this, why don't you go back to, just so to see who we are, that's the team, we're looking shockingly old and shockingly white, to be honest with you, when I looked at that photograph, but we're all old friends. Virtually everybody who's on there has worked with me at, you know, for many, many decades. And the next page is our location, some of you might recognize the IBM building, that is a rendering, it's not painted white yet, and our logo isn't quite up yet, they're doing a construction as we speak, we're in separate places, but if you look, there's more than $15 million in spools of fiber optics and things in a warehouse just off the back of those buildings, so we are fully funded. We are funded by, not by the sort of worst of us, but we like to consider the best of us, the New York State Pension Fund, the Ontario Teachers Union Pension Fund, these are long-term investors in good operators, we don't build and sell, we build and operate for the long term. You will have my phone number, it's on the website, I live right down the road, I plan on retiring from this job, we don't plan on doing anything in my career anyway, anything other than this. So, take you through it, again, we're your neighbor here, the furthest, if you call 1-800-Archtop, assuming that's our number, the furthest you will get is our call center in Kingston, which we are building and hiring into now. And our mission is really simple, to deliver the fastest, most reliable service that you can get anywhere in the world, here in Rhinebeck and throughout the Hudson Valley. Next page.
I'm working.
Again, one of the founders, me, I live here, we're the first tenants, we're a longstanding partner in all of our communities, and I think that bears some mentioning. If you call the Catarogus County or Allegheny County right now, we just completed a 4,400-mile build in those counties, and talk to them about who we are, me personally, I encourage you to check up on us. In fact, the only ethical war, award for pure ethics in broadband is called the Bill Brezner Award, which was all of our mentor. We take this very seriously, we're a family-run company, we hire local, we tend to live in the area where we operate, and these are all differentiators that it's hard for large mega cable to, to compete with. Again, we have had long-term open communication with our communities for our entire careers, and continue to do so, where we have reached out to every community, including this one, very early on, before we had any really concrete plans, we wanted to be a partner and allow the municipalities to have a say in ultimately what we are doing, I'll talk about that in a minute. Again, we are actually not just a highly awarded company, we have won more than any other company through Brezner Communication, the, both the business ethics and the community service awards, more than any other company. In fact, they asked us to, despite our scores being higher than anyone else, they asked us to pull our application for these awards because we had won it four years in a row and they wanted to give it to somebody else, that was the Industry Trade Association. Keep going, Tom. So what we're talking about here, and let me talk a little bit about the network before we get into this, we have a, and do we have the map in this?
We do have, the middle mile.
The middle mile map? Yes. Yeah, if you could pull that up, that would be great. Basically, it is a competitive fiber provider to the existing broadband technologies that are there today, it's not just technically better, it is more secure, it is more environmentally sensitive, but ultimately, for the customer, it is faster and cheaper, and, and more reliable. Excuse me, I have allergies and, but, but what we're doing is, as I said, the first tranche of construction is all, with all private investment, it is 2,508 miles in the first phase, going up one side of the Hudson, starting in Hudson, New York, coming all the way down to south of Rhinebeck, picking up Redhook and Hudson, we, and we have also purchased, just in the last 12 months that we've been in existence, three of the oldest family-run telephone companies in the state, Germantown Telephone, which belonged to the Botsey family for 130-something years, Bruce and I are old friends, we have purchased that company, and his entire family is continuing to work for us. The Hancock Telephone Company on the Delaware River, we have purchased also, and the reason we are doing this is these companies desperately need capital, and they desperately need an upgrade of technology into the future, and we want to make sure that they survive as good community-based telephone companies. Just in the last couple of weeks, we've also purchased the Warwick Valley Telephone Company, and there are several others that we are in negotiations with to create what I call a constellation around the Hudson Valley. This is Warwick, obviously Germantown, and this is Warwick, this is Hancock, this is Germantown, and the $250 million that I spoke of is to construct all of the areas where you see colors here, that's what we call our Phase 1, that will be serving about 140,000 homes and businesses, again, with the latest fiber, and we will be doing that with no public assistance, just the sort of guidance that we always hope for, and what we'd like to do is come in with our map and say, hey, this is, we're technical guys, this is what the map looks like to us, our economics people have decided that this is what the most viable is, but where, what have we gotten wrong, right, because invariably, you know your community significantly better than we do, and so we have had meetings with the community and said, this is the map, this is ultimately where it's gonna be, should this line be over here, is there a new development going in over there, is there a boys and girls club we missed down a four miles of, you know, farm road, and where are the places that we have done? And basically, massage the design to best meet the community needs, and we have done that for many decades. It's really been the key to our success is that interaction with the local municipalities. As you can see, the transport route brings a redundant network all the way down to New York City, 40 Broad Street, and up to, up to Albany, where we have a data center called Inoc, so it'll be a fully redundant self-healing ring. If someone cuts our fiber in one location and it is presently routed to 40 Broad, it will automatically, everybody on the 40 Broad side of the cut will continue service as they have, if you're on the north other side of that cut, you will automatically fail-safe over to the Albany route. So again, it tends to be a very, very durable network. The reason we built it this way is we really got our start, not just building residential places, but we built the fiber optics into the Intercontinental Ballistic Missile Silo of Mount Strom Air Force Base, you know, so we understand what mission critical means, keeping things up all the time is very important, so it's a process called 59s, which means you are up 99.999% of the time, and that's the standard we hold ourselves to. So why don't you go back to that? And anyone who wants to see any of these things, we have copies, you're more than welcome to see them, they're also on our webpage. So, microtrench, how are we doing this? Traditionally, you built it by attaching to telephone poles, about 80% of the time you attach, so if you look at any telephone pole or electric pole, you will see the electric lines on top and three or four other attachments at a lower level. We've always found that somewhat unattractive, and, and then it also puts us in a situation where we are gaining, having to get permits from the local electric utility, which as you can imagine, is never an easy process. They try and push maintenance onto us as we attach, so it costs us, literally, right now, we are running, in order to attach to Central Hudson poles, it is costing us twice as much money to get the permit as it is to build the fiber. And I'm not kidding, they are charging us twice as much money, and you heard that, right? The amount of money that it costs us to build the fiber, we're spending two times that making the poles ready for us to attach. That is an untenable situation, obviously, if we didn't have to pay that, we'd be building three times as much fiber as we currently are. So, we are identifying a new technology, not entirely new, Google has been trying this for years, they tried it in some cities in the Midwest with mixed success, some might say no success, you know, early, early on, and it's called microtrenching, and it cuts a very, very narrow blade down this, down the roads, which is almost invisible, and we'll show you some pictures in a minute, and their initial mistake was not to bury it deep enough, and the idea is to cut into the pavement, but keep it above all of the other utilities, the electric, the gas, the water, all of the different things that are underground, we stay out of their way by only being about eight to 14 inches below the surface. But we are low enough that if you mill or scrape the road and put new asphalt, we're below that, so we tend to be in this sort of happy medium in between those two things, and it is also extraordinarily fast, you almost don't know we are there, we can build, each crew builds about 2,000 feet a day, so the entire village of Rhinebeck is about 11 and a half miles, I think, or 12 miles of, of design that we have, so as you can see, it is a matter of weeks where we would be in the town, and now these, these individual machines, and I want you to go to the next page, so you can see them, they are, so you don't even need to shut down the road, there are these little machines with a tiny saw on the front of them and a vacuum, so actually. So actually, the streets tend to be cleaner when we're done than when we started. The individual vacuums, and then we put conduits down this narrow trench. And you can see here what that trench looks like, and then ultimately what the repair looks like with a patch on top. And when you're done, very often, we will actually do it on the seam itself. This one is done in the middle of the road. This one is actually done in what's called a fog line. So you put actually that white stripe along the side of the line. We actually cut that and then put a new white stripe so it looks like we're not even there. And then each individual service drop into your home is teed off of that. It is also underground, what we call flower pot. It's a little case that we put in the ground with a green top, usually in the green space on the side of the road. So again, you don't have one of those ugly three-foot-high pedestals out in front of your house. And as I said, it's very quick.
Do you put the drops in for every service? For potential customer? You just put it in right as you go or wait?
We don't put the drop to the home. We put the drop to the flower pot, basically. So now we communicate that we're going to be there. We hope that people sign up as we are constructing. So we will do as many drops during construction as possible. But obviously, people move in, move out, electric service later. The, we will build a network that is not just able to service Rhinebeck today, but will be so fiber-rich that I don't think anybody's lifetime in here will, you know, we will not need to upgrade this network during any of our lifetimes. The technology that we use, XGS Pond, as I said, we're going to be provisioning to 10 gig now, which again is 10 times as fast as, fastest service you can get right now. But it were the cards that use, we will only, if we needed to go to, we're actually testing right now, 25 and 50 gig. And there are people that are somewhere else that are testing 100 gig cards. So all we would need to do is basically slide a card out of a chassis, make some connections, and slide it back in to upgrade to 25, 50, or 100 gig in the future. Very scalable, does not require us to come and re-dig your streets or get in the interchange, you would need to change the cards and change the small device in your home. Keep going. What's the timeline? As I said, about 11 miles. We would stay within the village and on county and village roads as much as possible. State roads, where not. It's the added bureaucracy of the New York State DOT that we try and avoid, not for any other reason. There will be a limited amount of aerial construction needed if you need to go over a railroad track or, you know, for different reasons. To cross a road, you might have to go up the pole over and then back down. But the vast majority of it will be underground, so we're not adding to the eyesore of the plant in the air. We could start as early as a week after final approval from this body. We actually have, we are a CLAC, or Competitive Local Exchange Carrier, classified by the federal government and the state. We have a state CPCN, which allows us into the easements and the right-of-way. So technically, we could build on poles. Please don't take this as disrespectful, but we could do this without the input of the village. That is just completely inanimate to us. We just don't think that way. And the first, you know, the first meeting I had was with your mayor and with your relevant employees who handled this issue. But we have this, we have the state authorization. And the construction would be weather permitting, about six weeks. Keep going. What is the product? Obviously, I'm telling you who we are and what we're going to do. The next obvious question is what we're going to provide and how much it's going to cost. The bad news, I don't have the final numbers on what that is, but I can tell you a couple of broad things in that regard. Again, we're going to be offering a symmetrical 2 gig to 8 gig connection to start, which means 2 gig up, 2 gig down is our entry-level speed, up to 8 gig up and 8 gig down. Cable only provides fast downward speeds. They actively cut the speeds on the upward. And they're the best efforts product. Everybody on a cable modem gets their service from a node. It's a shared resource, which is why you might notice your internet speed slows down around dinnertime, when people get home from school, and they speed up again in the middle of the night. We are a dedicated service. The 8 gigs you get from us are your 8 gigs. You paid for them, they're yours, you can use them or not. They're not minimized by anybody else's use. We are participant. In fact, I was on the FCC board that created something called the ACP, or Affordable Connectivity Program. It was created during the COVID pandemic to get broadband to people in need. And if you are in the school lunch program or the STAR program, all this, others, you get authorized at the FCC. And they will give a $30 subsidy to your provider. We will create a $30 tier. So basically, if you're in the school lunch program, not that there's a lot of that in the village of Rhinebeck, but if you are classified, if you can qualify for one of these programs, you essentially get your service for free. We will be, as I said, a competitive service provider. So just by simple macroeconomics, we cannot, in order for us to compete with a well entrenched incumbent, we're going to have to be cheaper than they are. I guarantee you that we will be cheaper than any other service there. But we also, in the third sort of leg of our stool, of our revenue, obviously, the acquired phone companies are one. This build-out is the second. And the third is there is this massive wave of public funding to get broadband to where it isn't. And we are going to participate in that. We completed a 4,400 mile build in the southern tier, using New York broadband money in part. It was a 50/50 split. And that program had a $59 cap on any product that you had using that network. We anticipate participating in the next round of funding, should it develop. Now, we're not using that funding here, so there's no worry about delays. We're using our own investment to do this. But in the hinterlands, where there are, you know, farms, what we call, like to call more cows than people, the cost to deploy can get very expensive, $10,000 or $12,000 to get to one home. And that's where the public subsidy comes in. And we partner with the NTIA, National Telecommunications Infrastructure Association, to do that. And we actually will be partnering with the municipalities. In this case, not the village, because there's no unserved in the village, but with the township, because there are plenty of unserved and underserved locations in the township, to make sure that we sweep all of those locations into this plan. So nobody in Dutchess County won't have internet. The mission is to make sure that everybody in Dutchess County has, including all the other counties. General benefits, XGS Pond is simply state of the art. There's nothing faster anywhere in the world, period, full stop. We're going to be doing both residential and commercial. So the downtown business community is going to love it. They always do. It's faster, it's more reliable, costs less money. It is the fastest speeds in the world that exist today. As I mentioned, 10 times faster than your current speeds, and it's symmetrical. And the last thing I'd just point out is COVID, the pandemic has fundamentally changed our industry. The work from home issue, these things, and the need for reliable, cost-effective services just never been, we've always been a nice-to-have service. We now are, in my opinion, an essential utility, and we need to behave that way. I will say, Bresnan Communications and Archtop have always behaved that way, but I think other companies are now starting to. Final page. Community impact, it's going to be pretty broad. Collaboration with Public Works, utilizing their local knowledge to make sure our impact on the community as we do this. We don't want to cut your water systems, we don't want to do any damage, so we work very, very closely with the DPW. As I said, as mentioned about the pedestals, we maintain a high level of sensitivity to the aesthetics of all the communities we are in. We have built some of the, you know, Krakow, Poland is a medieval city. You know, we had sensibilities there. We have built in areas, everybody wants their homes and neighborhoods to be beautiful. So we tend to stay away from some of the uglier places. In this case, we're going to be actively preserving your harbor and green space. In other words, we're not going to be arid, so we're not going to be cutting down trees. We're going to be in the streets, so we're not ripping up your lawns. And the last couple of issues are, there is, what we're talking about here is absolutely no construction or ancillary cost to the village ever. And so let me say that. There is nothing that we are doing which will have any impact on the finance of the village. We will never come to you and say, we need more money to complete, or we need to rebuild this, or we need to extend. This is a privately-held, infrastructure-funded enterprise, and there is no impact to the finances of the village. It is a competitive service, which we will be providing to the community. And we are not here asking for any benefit other than your approval, your help in the aesthetics and the routing, your help with making sure that we do what we do, we do right, and to be the start of what we hope is a longstanding relationship. As I said, I live here, I'm not planning on going anywhere. And the last thing is some document that puts a frame around roles and responsibilities, some firm believer identifying what people's obligations are in the front side, so you're not confused or frustrated in the middle or at the end of the process. So we're talking about some kind of memorandum of understanding that basically lists exactly what we're going to do, exactly when we're going to do it, exactly what the impact to the community is. This way, you can hold us accountable. And to the extent that we need any assistance with routing and things like that, again, each of our roles and each of our responsibilities are well documented in this agreement. And you will have to all have, obviously, you know, somebody who's very important to us, so you'll have to be able to see it. And we look forward to hearing what your thoughts and concerns are as we go, not just today, but ongoing. That's who we are.
Anybody have any questions here? I have a bunch of questions. And they'll probably go quick too, but they're kind of going to be miscellaneous here. You show the two to four micro ducts at the bottom of your, is that all for you? Or is that expansion options for a second carrier, a second provider?
Great question. No, we are putting roughly double the capacity that we're going to need to make it available if the mayor were to call and say, we want to put fiber, direct fiber from City Hall to the town.
What about another CLAC?
We could, and have in the past. My guess is that Rhinebeck is a small enough town that the chances of another operator coming in and competing with both Charter or Spectrum and us are probably pretty low. But we are putting, wherever we're putting micro duct, we're putting capacity. That capacity, the most likely use of that will be either what we call INETs or independent networks from enterprises like municipalities or hospitals and things like that. But there is a possibility that a WISP or someone might come and want a, you know, a long hole, Crown Castle long hole provider may want that conduit, and we would make it available on an availability basis.
And then we have, we wrote a small wireless facilities ordinance, and any provider that has a right-of-way agreement with us is going to be non-exclusive, which I guess you kind of answered that question. You're not going to ask for exclusivity?
I mean, you might say this is just stuff, but we actually do believe that competition makes us better, and while we do, we've always worked on that premise, and it has worked for us for 30 years.
And then our agreement with Spectrum, we did a 5% of gross revenue for the use of the right-of-way. So I assume that's like a standard, you're in that same category?
No, actually, I'm glad you asked that. I actually, shockingly, in another life, I worked in Congress, and I was chief of staff to the Commerce Committee when the 96 Cable Act was rewritten. And the Title VI of the Act allows for video providers, cable TV providers, to have access to the right-of-way. Back when that was written, the internet didn't exist, so it was phone companies and cable companies were the two entrants into the right-of-way. Phone companies already had this CPCN to get into the right-of-way. Cable needed a different route. So they created Title VI. And in order to administer that right-of-way and those cable franchises, they allowed for the local franchisees or the municipalities. It really was intended for the states to charge this, but the states didn't want to deal with the administration. So they pushed it out to the local franchises. And, but our service is just internet and phone. We're not providing any video service. You can get your over-the-top service, you know, through us, obviously, in a better fashion, but we're not going to be providing, you know, 200 channels of linear TV and charging $250 for that privilege. We're just going to be providing phone and internet, and therefore, we're not a Title VI company.
Do you customarily pay a franchise fee for using, use of the right-of-way?
We don't.
You don't pay any?
No. As I was, considered a competitive local exchange carrier. We're considered an essential service, so there is no franchise fee. I personally believe that the 96 Act, it's time for it to be rewritten. And I believe that we should have a flattening of the franchise situation, where all entrants in the right-of-way should pay a similar fee. I think it would level the playing field. And if the state or the county or anyone starts to advocate, they would find an ally in me in that doing that. I don't want to not pay franchise fees. I want to abide by the rules and laws as they exist. And right now, as an information service, in air quotes, by the FCC, we're not allowed to pay franchises.
You're not allowed to?
That's just the structure, is we go through the CLAC process. If we offer video service, we would have to pay 5% of just those revenues.
So theory there, the video services are not essential?
So what's the Public Service Commission process? Does that take a long time to get approved? Do they look, they have to approve our right-of-way agreement?
Nope. They have done their deep dive into us. They have done all their, in fact, we're in front of them in, next week, on the approval of the transfer of patrol of Germantown Telephone to us. We've been dealing with the New York State Department of Public Service for many years. They judge you on financial, technical, and business and public qualifications. We meet all of those qualifications and have them. And the fact that we are, one of the things that they are pushing as a policy item is the extension of broadband to where it isn't. And since our entire model is that, we're obviously cat netting to the FCS revenue because we're spending $350 million that they don't have to come up with in their next funding package.
Different question. For the customers, you have the little drop. Do you do the service line for them, or do they have to pay for the engineering upfront? Or the cost of the fiber?
We did 4,400 miles of fiber to 70,000 locations in lower, and many of those were 2,000-foot and higher drops. That's another part of our technology, is that from the flower pot, we can actually go 2,000 feet. Cable needs to put a power supply every 150 feet, so they have to engineer intensive drops. Our drops are very simple. And of all of those installations, we charge for exactly zero. Even the ones that were longer, the state would allow us to charge for drops over 350 feet. We did, I don't know that we did any drops that were less than 350 feet. And we never charged for a single one, we don't plan to.
Going from like the road to municipal, to like this building, who's like 30 feet and that's over?
Right. But if there was 1,970 feet down the road, another place that you wanted to get to, that same job would be free. Beyond 2,000 feet, we have to do what's called the line extension. And there needs to be a return on investment on that, you know, where there is a process. In the village of Rhinebeck, there will be no installation fees, and everybody in the village of Rhinebeck will have them.
Another question. So you're running the lines pretty close to the sidewalk on either side of the road? Is that correct?
No, and I should probably have Scott sort of talk about the technical stuff, but we run it usually on one side of the road and then do periodic crossovers to the other side of the road. And we put these, what we call flower pots on there, so.
So in the village, we have certain neighborhoods where we would really like to redesign the road to be able to have sidewalk. Right now, there's no sidewalk. So that means kind of re-engineering, basically, the width of the road, where the center line is potentially, and putting a sidewalk where none exists or moving certain pieces of sidewalk. It's sort of like a moving target, you know? And so I was curious about what happens if your line gets buried.
So, micro trenching is very, very versatile. We can move it, I can be up against the face of the curb if there's an existing curb. If what you're referring to is an EOP installation, so edge of pavement, and then there's nothing, we move it out into the street. We work very closely with the DPW to say, you're going to put a sidewalk in here, it's going to be a six-foot-wide sidewalk, let's bump out to eight feet. That way, we're out of the way of the construction. Micro trenching is very versatile. It's not like the other technologies that we use. Your conventional-style trenching with the big excavators and steel plates for months. your conventional-style trenching with the big excavators and steel plates for months, it's nothing like that, right? It's very quick, very versatile, horizontal directional drilling, you have to have a path pre-planned, we like the micro trenching, I've been doing this for about 30 years now, about 30,000 miles under my belt of micro trenching, so it, it's very versatile in the fact that if the mayor says, we're gonna do the sidewalk relocation program, and you're gonna put in, it's only like about six inches, we can make all those changes on the fly. We capture all of our trenching in a GIS layer, so I capture every single utility that's out there, I use ground penetrating radar before we start trenching, capture the utility, share that with the city, so it's an inventory, so we're touching both sides of the road, pretty much everywhere, but we're only cutting on one and cutting back and forth, so, does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Probably a little bit more than you asked, too.
Yeah, it's GIS mapping, that's great.
Just to say, in our discussions with these guys initially, that was one of the issues that we brought up immediately, was that we do have some ideas that are road designs maybe influx, especially what comes out of the, of the comp plan committee, and so...
Such a black ox.
Yeah, so, yes, so, being able to address those concerns and literally, you know, walking the streets and having some plans for which streets are gonna be where we can accommodate, or can be accommodated, because that is gonna be very important.
And I think in the worst possible case scenario, where we couldn't see around the corner, or couldn't see the future sort of use, and we did not put it in the right exact spot, our industry is, called force relocates, we get told all the time to come and move your stuff, we don't like it, it's expensive, but it is not unheard of, and if there was a block that needed to be moved, we would come in.
The conduit is made out of high-density polyethylene, and it's very flexible, so you can dig back if you needed to put an ADA ramp in at the end of a sidewalk, and we work up against the old curb, we could go 10 feet in both directions, and I could pull that pipe 10 feet.
You're not have to cut it in a splice or...
Wouldn't even have to cut it. So, a lot of times when cities are doing curbing gutter replacements, and ripping out the old curb faces, we just cut back a few feet on both sides, one of the Archtop maintenance crews would be there, they'd just pull it out, the guy drops in his new thing, we try to minimize the impact to create additional work for your other contractors, so micro trenching really allows us to do that.
It also allows the network to stay up during that process, you can move it 10 feet and not impact, I've actually seen fiber on a road after a storm with semi-trailers driving over, and it never goes down, very, very durable network.
I think that's a valuable piece, too, to the micro trenching process, that trench is only an inch wide, so you can imagine, in a conventional-style trench, you're 12, 24, 36 inches wide, steel plates, closing lanes, closing roads, with micro trenching, we never shut down a road, we typically don't shut down a lane, it's a very, very small process, pedestrian traffic has to flow during construction hours, in vehicular traffic has to flow during the construction process, we want it to be very, you know, sensitive to the traveling public, both pedestrian and vehicles, so that way, we're not impacting the construction process.
We also build it in a way that is sensitive to that very thing, we don't cut 11 miles of trenching and leave it open for two weeks while we go into that, we only cut what we can fill that day.
Only close the same day.
1,500 feet, we'll put the fiber in it, patch it. And, and we will, and we will, so when we're done that day, it will essentially be finished.
You leave in the morning, you see it setting up, you come home at night, and you're like, it's here.
So, what you're asking us for is this agreement, this agreement that allows to find where, who, what, where, and how we're gonna do this, and that's what you're gonna act, that's to ask to us to carve out that agreement and work that through our legal and with them, then we come to terms, come to terms on. And so, my ask to the board is, you know, permission to go start working on that agreement and bring it back to you after we've come to some sort of understanding, and put it up to you guys for review and look.
To draw up the other way?
What?
Draw, draw up the other way.
Yeah.
I mean, given how many conversations I've had with the village residents about their frustration with Spectrum, I think providing an alternative, especially one that is fiber, I think is an excellent idea. You know, the fact that it's non-exclusive, the, you know, yeah, I think it's great.
I would like to have those little conduits, just potential expansion, if we had a third carrier come in, a third provider, whatever you call it, if that's possible, as part of the agreement.
Sure.
The micro ducts.
There's plenty of language that exists, you know, Verizon puts duct in all the time that we, at least, they're here, it's a relatively standard ecosystem.
Right.
That all carriers could interconnect with each other.
Because...
Happy to provide any language that you, they're usually...
That's it.
That's the...
Looks like hex.
That's a lot of people using...
So, I think, I think in the conversations that we had, we talked about laying several of these conduits, and some of them would initially be dark.
Yeah.
Right, and they would be available for...
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, so there wouldn't be additional capacity in the grid.
Right, but I, we have to, you know, make sure that in the agreement, that that's what it says.
Yeah, lots of buzzwords for it, you know, future proof, we tend to design networks not for their use today, but for their potential use tomorrow, in the future. That includes fiber counts, we could get away with putting 48 or 96-count fiber everywhere, we put 144 and 288 in.
For future use.
We could get away with one or two conduits, but we're gonna put four in, for future use. We will never have a, shouldn't say never, should I? We should almost, we will almost never have an opportunity to use that additional conduit ourselves, unless, again, there is an INET, and again, fire department wants to connect to the police department, and there's a conduit route in between, that's where we'd use it, or one of our carrier partners, Crown Castle, Zayo, or a new entrant, we would come in and we would make the fiber available to them at whatever fairly standardized rates in the industry.
It's also key to understand, that 16-millimeter pipe, just three years ago, that was capable of about 144-count cable max, that's all you could put in there. The fiber technology is finally catching up with the conduit technology, so the pipe's getting smaller, trenches are getting smaller, cuts are getting smaller, cable took a while to come along, now you can put a 288 in that, and by the time he retires, he'll be looking at a 432 in that. What that means is, if you've got an extra pipe, and you house it with a 432, or 148-count cable today, or 144-count cable today, 10 years from now, you just pull a new, larger cable in, pull the old cable out, and you never lose duct capacity, you always have spare pipe, if that makes sense.
Could I see one of your example right-of-way agreements, just a draft of a right-of-way agreement that you guys have done, because I'd like to nerd out on that stuff, and I can just figure out all this, you know, the business terms and that, from that.
Certainly, we've actually approached all of the counties, we have an agreement right now with Duchess County, and it is a fairly standard, well, it's not very standard, there aren't that many of them, but it's an innocuous document, and we are doing a lot of engineering, there's a ton of money coming into the counties, we're built out, how to use that money responsibly, I think is important to the communities, and certainly important to the entrance in that market. So, it's a document that says, and I don't think Duchess County had done a lot of preliminary work on what to do with this broadband funding, and in that vacuum, sort of enter, not a nice thing to say, but sort of the snake oil salesman engineering firm, which comes in and says, I'll charge you $250,000, and I'll give you the best broadband plan, and they drop this very fancy document off, and then you're sort of stuck, well, what do we do with this, right? So what we're doing is doing all of the engineering on our dime to allow the county to identify all the unserved and under-sterved locations in the county, and the document is very simple, it says broadband's really, really important, there's a ton of money coming down the pike, it's a non-exclusive document, they can enter into this with any other provider as well, but, you know, the county deserves its entire share, and perhaps more, of this bucket of money that's coming, we're partnering with Archtop to make sure that an application goes in in a timely manner, and the funds are there to provide that last one. We have that with Ulster County, Duchess County, we're in the process of finalizing it, Columbia County, you know, Green County has done an excellent job, they only have about 140 locations that aren't served, so, we can show you those agreements, they're public documents that...
Yeah, or just any right-of-way agreement that you have.
That's a different agreement than what we're talking about.
Yeah, I just wanna see a right-of-way agreement.
So that's what we're gonna work on, so I'm, I like to make, I like to get moving. I like to get moving here, because we've got a lot to go through yet, the motion I'm making is to start working on that agreement with our legal team.
What I'm saying is, I'm not interested yet until I see the...
I'm making a motion, you can vote.
You said that agreement.
Yeah, I'm making a motion to draw up an agreement.
Yeah.
With our...
Memorandum of Understanding is not the right, the final right-of-way agreement, it's a separate agreement.
I think. And we'll work with our legal to draw, to draw that up.
You said the wrong thing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
So we're gonna end up with two agreements, we're gonna end up with a right-of-way agreement and a memorandum of understanding.
Who does what and how, who does what.
Okay, great, so, let's start, I agree that we should start the process, and pending what all of these agreements end up looking like, we'll vote on it when it's done, but, yeah, okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close?
Not until I see the right-of-way.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, we'll be in touch.
Any questions that you have in the interim, the mayor something else, have your question?
Thank you. Treasurer's report, Karen.
Okay, treasurer's report is for the period ending May 31st, which is also the end of our fiscal year, the general fund ended the month with $201,635.70, the water fund ended the month with $96,844.46, the sewer fund ended the month with $140,664.59. The vouchers presented for payment, there were a few for June, but the majority of them were from May 31st and prior, and the general fund totaled $81,150.49, and the water fund totaled $66,114.30, and the sewer fund $38,360.55. We had bills for the water and treatment plant upgrades, $8,885, the grant for the compost, $270, the capital police, $601,018, and we had bills in escrow totaling $20,910.56. Monthly operating statement is provided with the revenue and expenditures through June 13th of 2023, for water and sewer billing and adjustments, as signed off by trustee Nutter, are on file and presented for approval.
I'd like to get the adjustments approved as presented, I'd like a motion for that.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, so, at the close of the, in the 2223 budget, we have budgeted transfers to capital, so, the budgeted transfers to capital in the fire, $60,000, in the streets, $6,993, in the police, $10,000, in the water, $20,000, and in the sewer, $5,000. Those have been completed, and as per the discussions that we had during the budget, because we did not budget for transfers for 2324, the board did discuss that we had some remaining funds in the electric because of the agreement that we worked on, so, in those remaining funds, in 2023, 223, for the capital fire, $10,000, capital streets, $10,000, and capital police, $10,000, for, they're done in this current year, but they're agreed that they were done for the 202324 year. However, the only, the only addition to that is, we did budget $50,000 for the fire, but during, for 2324, but the board talked about we would add the 10 if we could, so those are the three ones that the village board agreed on, so...
So I'd like, since that was a discussion, I'd like to make a motion to approve those transfers to the capital funds as identified.
Okay. Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Did you wanna approve the vouchers?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the vouchers as presented.
Second.
Questions? Question, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, so then, the last item I have is just the budget amendments, I probably will have some more budget amendments for the prior year at the next meeting, but the main ones I have for this time are in the general funds, they're kind of all over, but they, the main ones are the ones we just discussed, the transfer to capital, in the comp plan, we received a grant for $10,000, and we had remaining funds in that, because we received that grant late, so I'm proposing that transfer, and that is going to be that $10,000 that's gonna roll into fund balance, but we'll increase the budget for that, for next year, for that line item for $10,000. The rest are mainly just within each department.
So, just so I can clarify that, so, because we got the grant late, we're gonna roll it into fund balance, but then it's gonna roll into the 2324 budget for the comp plan.
Correct, we're going to, in addition to this budget amendment, I'll, my, I'm going to ask the board for authorization to increase that line item by $10,000 for the 2324 year, which will be my first budget amendment.
And that was, to be clear, that was for the grant from the Greenway, not the one that we're gonna talk about later? Okay, great.
Yes.
Thank you.
That's correct.
Great.
That it?
That's it.
All right, thank you. All right, we're gonna get all the partnership questions.
Wait, we need to vote on this budget amendments?
That's all I have, but if you wanna vote on them, that's a whole...
We can, all right, we can make a motion on approving the budget amendments as presented.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Vanessa, the village hall has that study.
Okay, so, as we have been discussing, updating the HVAC system in the village hall, replacing the fuel oil burning furnace, which is at its end of life, prior to doing construction on this building, we thought it wise to do a more comprehensive hazmat study for asbestos in this building, so, I've gotten three quotes from three different companies that do this study, and they're all under the threshold, so I don't need to, us to vote on the, on this, but I just wanted to inform the public and the board what this project is about, and that we're, we're looking for the best way to use our funds in this case, there's some pretty standardized rates and stuff, but, so those, those quotes are up on the cloud for, for y'all to see, so I haven't made a decision yet on which quote to go with, I'm just gonna take a, you know, look, look at it closely to see which gives us the best deal.
There's quite a bit of price variation within, so...
But they're all under, what is it, $5,000 or something?
No, some of them are...
No, one is not.
So what's the limit that doesn't require us to, sorry, you said...
I mean, we all need to approve expenditures.
I think you just mean that they're under the $35,000 threshold to go out to formal bids.
Oh, is that...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
But you still have a responsibility to take the lowest responsibility.
Right.
So, the point is, you need to review these and then come back and...
I need to review them, because there's a lot of different items with slightly different cost per, and then multipliers of those different items, so they'll say, for example, we wanna test the, we wanna test the, like, the, whatever is like coating the joints of pipes, and we wanna do that X number of times at this rate per, and they wanna test the, like, the tiling, they wanna test, you know, we know that there's asbestos in the tile, the floor tile mastic, et cetera, et cetera, so I'll get back to you with a request.
A recommendation.
A recommendation, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, Rick, let's talk about the Asker Bridge, huh?
Okay, sure, thank you, my favorite location, so, on May...
So on May 5th, there was a car accident on the bridge at Route 9 that crosses Lansman Kill right by the teaching park. And as part of that accident, the car actually jumped off the state's bridge and landed on our pedestrian bridge. So for those that aren't familiar, there's a roadway bridge and then there's a pedestrian bridge. The state owns the road bridge, we own the pedestrian bridge. The pedestrian bridge was, was damaged. The pedestrian bridge is ours. Unfortunately, that pedestrian bridge is not covered, the structure is not covered by our insurance. However, the motorists' insurance company has agreed to cover the claim. It's going to give you the bad news situation. The bad news is, is that the claim, the liability is capped at $100,000. And that would be for us, the state, and possibly the utility companies that come through. So what we need to do is get the bridge, what we'd like to do is get the bridge evaluated to see what kind of condition it is and then to see if we can affect at least some sort of temporary repairs until the state does a, the replacement of the bridge beginning in 2025. So I have a task order from Time Bond authorized up to $5,000 for one of their engineers to come in, inspect the bridge, take extensive photographs and document all that's there so that we can begin some level of insurance claim. And I can say just the mechanics of this unfortunately are that the claim is going to take a while to settle, just the way these things go.
So we're going to be out of pocket five grand until we can figure it out?
Well, until the insurance company figures it out and everybody else, we can, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Where do we fall in that waterfall of priority?
What happens is.
Speaking like a bankrupt lawyer.
That's right, I know, asking a question. What happens is the insurance agency, State Farm in this case, will not begin paying any bills until all of the bills are in.
Got it.
From the state, from us, from the utilities. They will then decide.
Who gets priority?
Yeah, who's going to get what from where.
That's nice.
If we happen to spend more money than, than we would be allocated back, we have a couple of options. One is to sue the individual. That person's unclear at this time, may or may not have an umbrella policy, which will then continue to cover them, or they don't. We don't know. But in any respect, we need to do the inspection. State Farm is not going to do it anytime soon, if at all. So we need to get the inspection done, find out what we can do and see if it's feasible to at least temporarily reopen the bridge. And we all have to keep, you know, for, until 2025 and then the state will be putting in a bridge. So this is to at least get this, get this process started. And we will be documenting all of the, first of all, we need to document the bridge and its condition so that goes to the driver's insurance agency. And second of all, we have to document all our expenditures because that eventually will become part of our claim to the insurance agency. So I'd like to make a motion that we accept task order 2023037 from Time Bond for up to $5,000 for the structural assessment and documentation of the pedestrian bridge over the Lansman Kill.
Second. Discussion?
I don't, I don't want to be negative. If we make a claim in this accident, then they're going to have a sophisticated claims adjuster come out and do a report, which would, it's almost like, here's what, they do, they do basically an offer. Here's what we'll give you, you know, and it's very detailed and it's based upon like contractor who does bridges or some kind of an expert.
So, so the situation is.
So why do we need engineering on our end? The decking, the, I don't know if it's called decking or whatever, but that doesn't appear to be damaged.
That's the railing. The issue is, is that it may be months to years.
But if the whole thing, the bridge is going to be demolished in 2025 and thrown and discarded.
It's currently closed, right?
It's currently closed, right.
It's going to be discarded.
No, no, he's talking about the, the traffic bridge is going to be.
No, they could.
And that goes away.
Right, and the pedestrian bridge.
It's going to be discarded.
Well, we're going to save the ironwork, but yes, the, under the, the concrete pathway is going to be.
So why are we putting money into a crate? You know what I'm saying?
Well, because if we have any claim, basically what I'm getting from our agent is that State Farm potentially can sit on this forever.
It's not clear to us that State Farm is going to send an evaluator out to evaluate.
So, so the point of the story is that we have to do this if we want to attempt to reopen the bridge at any point soon?
And, and also and to file a claim. I mean, there, there's.
So we can't even file a claim until we have an engineer.
You have to, you have to file that claim.
I don't know. That's how it works. I mean, that's not how it works with, it just had two damage and it was like.
The issue is, and this is again, I know we've, we've been over this, and I've been through this with our insurance, our insurance agent. Basically, what she was telling me is that they have, State Farm basically is just like put this case at the end of their, at the, at the end of, at the end of their queue. And we don't even have a, a team assigned to it yet. And she's been asking over and over and over again. And if we want to be able to move forward in a timely manner, then we should do this and we should, we should move forward and that's it, that's the claim.
And our insurance won't work on our behalf because it's not insured by the village. So we have to go down independently.
No, I figured that out, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I just don't think we're going to get the engineering fees back.
Well, the.
The asset to document and go for what we can.
Right, I mean, the alternative is to just let it sit there until if and when State Farm decides they want to, they want to send an adjuster.
Do you have something to say, Tom?
Is it okay?
Yeah. Yes, but you should introduce yourself so, and so everybody can see you. You have a question?
Yes. Do you want, do I need to go through?
Yes, you're there now.
Not opposition to anything, just, just by two cents, I was town supervisor for two years and we had an issue with a couple of bridges and we used county engineering to do engineering for us to help to, you know, decide the sustainability.
Yeah, there is county programs that we can go through to do that. Unfortunately, since this was an accident.
Yeah.
And the way the accident happened because of a medical emergency, there's different rules that happen that fall into place. And the fact that State Farm can even say, we're not going to, we're not going to be held liable at all. So it comes onto us to, you know, speak for ourselves and get, and get involved and get in the queue because the DOT is going to get in the queue. We need to get it in the queue, you know, and if anybody else who's involved with this accident is going to be in the queue. We all have to, we all have to be there to, to get a chance of what they may set the maximum cap at to, to pay out.
Each day won't get involved because it was an accident.
No, this is.
All right, that's something, Ben. All right, that's all.
Yeah, but good advice, Ben.
Pretty good.
Doesn't work here.
I mean, the alternative, and Brent, I think to your, to your point, I mean, the alternative will be not to do this and basically to let it sit for.
To leave it closed.
To leave it closed, to leave it closed until.
And potentially dangerous because they'll be closed, which is not like we've, you know.
Well, right now, that, right now, there are barriers closed off the sidewalk.
Yeah, they're not going to.
Right, it's taped off, but like.
It's taped off, right.
You know, but it still exists. We have no idea if it's safe, right?
And I'm also concerned about our liability.
Yeah, because if like a kid jumps on and it's not safe, then like, you know, it doesn't matter if it's been closed off, that kid is still hurt.
Because there's no, there's nothing to protect them. No rails or anything to protect them right now.
Yeah, you got to take action.
All right. Yeah, this is, Brent, this is coming to us both from the suggestion of, I've, I've talked to both our, insurance agent and Rich Olson. And both of their recommendations was for us to get started on this, document the bills and then bring them forth.
It was five grand?
Excuse me?
It's five grand.
Five grand, up to five grand.
Okay.
Hopefully it's less.
Great.
I know.
The alternative is we don't open it and then we still have the liability.
You're going to discount the bridge for like two years.
I know, it's, so I'm just like, what can we, just get rid of it?
A lot of people still want to use that bridge.
It's the only way to cross Lansman Kill, right?
No way.
The other street would be on South Parsons.
Yeah.
It's the only way.
It's really diminishes the ability, it's really diminishes the ability of the village to remain walkable. Yeah.
I think people would understand, but.
Are you kidding me? From Route 9 to South Parsons? Nobody would understand.
I think, I mean, to me, I think it's worth, it's worth, it's worth taking a look at. It is important in circulation of the district. A lot of people who do live on the south side will go back.
And people are going to jump out into the vehicle.
Yeah, it is like, there's no good, there's no safe alternative.
Like people are just going to walk on the vehicle side.
That's true. You got me sold on that.
It's the life of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, so no safe alternative.
No, I, I agree with, I just, you know, so when I started exploring this, a lot of my reactions was like, what? They can do that? Is that okay? And, and, and basically, you know, you know, the insurance companies make money by not paying out.
Yeah.
And that's.
We all pay some experience.
So I, I made a motion.
Let's keep moving here. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Very good, thank you. All right, task order 27, task order 27A. This is an amendment to the existing task order that we had before, which requires us to get the dam inspected, the Asher Dam inspected. We had an agreement in place that took us through 2022. I didn't realize and I forgot that it expired in 2022, so this is the cover through 2023, which provides four inspections. We need to do visual inspections every two months and detailed visual inspection every six months and then technical detailed inspection every four years. All right, so we are obligated to do this. We were paying Time Bond to perform those inspections for us as it was. This is a continuation of that agreement, so it's for a lump sum fee of $10,500 to be reimbursed according to the agreement for the purposes of performing the six inspections that I just identified for Asher Dam. I'd like to make a motion to approve the Time Bond inspection for Asher Dam. I have a second.
Second.
Discussion.
At one point did we see there were some threats, that there was some.
Yes, you're going to see this coming up.
Coming, coming. Okay.
I'm glad you read the stuff on the bottom.
There you go. They wrote ones together.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? So carry.
I was going to make a comment, okay. Just wish maybe we could get, try to get another bid on this next, I mean, maybe Urban Anthony, I think they.
We tried them four and they wouldn't do it.
They didn't, because they did this study for us years ago.
They won't, they're no longer in the area and won't go out and do it.
And Nancy Clark.
Yeah, we, we, last year we went out, everybody, and they all said no. Thank you, but no.
Every $18,000 is like 1% of our tax.
I know. And we're on.
Time to end.
Yeah.
But the good news is, is that the CFA just came out with a potential grant.
So let's talk about that, the lead in.
For the inspections.
So one of the things that just came across my desk was the CFA consolidated funding applications with grant money. And for the first time ever, this is the first time ever there's money in there to do dam repair. Damn. Right, so, and it's up to $50,000, which we had budgeted out of our expense. So it seemed logical to me that we should try to go after that 90% of the funds, up to $50,000 for as a maximum to do the repairs rather than taking it out of our budgeted line item, general fund, general fund account.
We can get a grant, we should get a grant.
Right. So part A of this is to apply for, it's called a non-agricultural, non-point source planning to seek funds for dam safety engineering. All right, so that's part A. Part B, the consolidated fund, which is really to help us with our zoning amendments coming forward as we move forward with the comprehensive plan, is, and we, I think we applied for this last year, right, the smart growth.
We applied for this smart growth grant last year to do the comp plan and we were sort of like too late, we were too advanced in their process. Yeah. We were too advanced in our process for them to grant us the grant, but they were like, you'll be perfect for the zoning part of it.
And that's what we're asking for right now.
Great, we'll see you next year.
Right. So we reached out to our engineering firm to ask us to help us write these grants to move forward and they came back with a request to do both of them and enter them into the grants gateway as $3,500 to, to write those grants that we could submit. So I'd like to make a motion to approve Time Bond to execute on those two grant applications on behalf of the village of Ryanbeck.
Second.
Discussion.
What was it, $3,800?
$3,800.
$3,500?
But close.
I was talking to Lydia about how I went to a workshop on the CFA with the Regional Economic Development Council and we should reach out and see if we could get a letter of support, especially for this smart growth.
Yeah, so last year I got letters of support from like a dozen people, a dozen different. And so I'll talk to them. Yeah, thank you Vanessa for that information.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, resolutions. We have in front of us a renewal for our MVP insurance. This is our health insurance, our medical and HRA renewal. This comes every year. We presented it to the union for their approval. This is their referral program and it's an existing, and it's an existing to what we already have for our insurance. The union is in favor of the law that doesn't increase, you know, we have to rewrite what we're, what we're doing. But so I'd like to make a motion to approve the MVP medical and HRA renewal.
Second.
Is that the first column? There's like four pages.
It's, so if you, there's a highlighted thing that says the referral, second column is the referral one.
So there's the current plan on the left and then the renewal plan.
Renewal plan.
Renewal plan.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
It's the one that's right next to it.
So this is, we, we thought we were faced with this increase already.
We budgeted, we've already budgeted for the decrease, correct. It's not, and it's not over what we budgeted.
Right, and there's some kind of responsibility that we have a substantially similar plan if we, if we use something else, so, in, in the union contract, if we replace.
The union contract, the union contract says we have to stay consistent with.
Yeah, so we're safe.
Yes, does, does it meet that? They have, they have reviewed it and they're in agreement. All right. I'd like to make a motion to approve the MVP medical and HRA renewal.
Second.
You already did, Lydia.
I already did, I did, I'm losing track. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Okay, next. This question came up about CCA. So as you would know, we are, our, some of our facilities are in the CCA, the Community Choice Aggregate. So the town sent us a letter asking us, what do we want to do? Do we want to opt in or opt out? And they only sent us one for our Harley Road Reservoir, which is in, in the town of Ryanbeck up on, up on Harley Road. My question as to why they didn't send us for our highway garage or wastewater treatment plant and I didn't get an answer, so I have to read out, reach out to the provider to get that. But today, we have until June, I guess we can opt out anytime, we can opt in. They, the town has chosen 100% renewable. I'd like to put it up to the board to opt into the town of Ryanbeck CCA for our Harley Road Reservoir at the 100% renewable.
I was a little, are we getting the residential or the small commercial rate?
So Martina, do you have that form? Now, now you do need that one that they sent from Harley Road. I don't have that one. It says, for the nine Harley Road Pump House and Violet Hill Estates. It doesn't say whether it's the residential or the commercial. It doesn't give us a choice.
Even though we don't have the letter for the other two, can we say for all properties in the town? Can I amend the motion?
I only want to agree on the one that they've sent us. And if they, if the other one is, like, Brent, is our water treatment plant is outside the scope of what they provide because of the electricity they use, is I'm not going to vote on that.
Got it, okay.
Okay? And I'm questioning and I did not get an answer and I have to reach out, like I said, to.
About the highway garage?
Yeah, the highway garage, not to the town because the town didn't have a clue, but I have to reach out to Hudson Valley Community Power and ask them a question of why the town is not in it, but for this one, we have a choice of, I do not agree with the opt-out enrollment, I am not familiar with the program, I do not like the program. I do feel it will be a benefit to the program or other, and we can opt in or out and we can, as was mentioned before, the town chose a, a rate of 100% renewable, which is slightly above today's rate for what we're paying for Central Hudson. But it's, it's the utility rate.
For residential, but not for small commercial.
For a commercial, it's actually below.
For a small commercial, it's actually below, yeah.
And I don't know if our Harley Road reached the correct, reached the checkpoint for being a commercial based on what it. And I don't know if our Harley Road reached the correct, reached the checkpoint for being the commercial based on what it runs. No, it's for probably water in. The only reason, there's no, like, there's very little electricity being used up there. Up at, up at the reservoir.
So the difference between residential and small commercial isn't the purpose of the electricity?
It's the consumption.
That's batshit.
Yeah.
Okay.
Go, go quick.
Just so you know, we have empty bills there in the winter because it's got electric heat.
Oh, that's, you're right.
Shelter has electric heat.
Yeah. Yes, it does. But the rest of the time, it's only if the pumps run to service Violet Hill.
Yeah.
Cause we have to have a pump to service Violet Hill. All right, so my motion is to use, to opt in and stay at the one hundred percent renewable rate.
Second.
Seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Does it, does that change the delivery note? Just supply charging?
No, Central Hudson. We're still connected by an umbilical cord to Central Hudson.
So we get the bill from them and everything?
The bill comes from Central Hudson. Nothing else changes. Okay, next on the list. Um, we're going through some changes with our wastewater treatment plant facility. Um, and we're gonna get more into that later, but for the essence, let's just suffice to say that we are losing our chief water, wastewater plant operator, and that person carries the license for us to operate the facility. And when that happens, we need to go out and have another license to operate on. So I reached out to DEC and Dutch County Board of Health, and we're advised in the interim period to reach out to an external contractor to use their license that we can operate under. We've had, we've had experience before with an organization, a company called Camo Pollution Control. They're familiar with our wastewater treatment plant. They're familiar with the operation. Uh, they know exactly what we need, and we can operate under their license and meet all of the DEC requirements by having them become the operator when our chief operator, uh, moves on. So they're, they came back with a proposal. They would like to, you know, including travel time, four to six hours per week at a cost of a hundred and twenty seven dollars per hour, and be the certified operator of our facility, and would go through all of the checkpoints which are in this thing, and I could read if you would like, but they will provide all those tasks and work with our staff to be able to manage our facility. So I would like to make a motion to hire Camo Pollution Control for a hundred and twenty seven dollars per hour for four to six hours per week. Until such time, we can take over and have a certified operator as we've had before.
Second.
Second. Discussion.
What does Kyle think of this?
Kyle's all in favor of it.
Okay.
In the short term, we don't really have a choice, except to use someone like this, so.
Okay.
But it's not enough hours to do the, the duties that are in the regs for the, for a, uh, chief water operator or wastewater operator.
Is that true? Cause it seems like, why would they?
Well, I just gave it to you like a month ago. Remember I sent it to you? All those things that a chief wastewater operator needs. There's no way you can do that, so please. But if the DEC doesn't mind, then let's, that's why I say the short term.
I mean, yeah, if these people can do, can do the job.
We have to, the short term.
Right, okay.
But long term, we need a chief wastewater operator.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next. Martina, do you wanna talk about closing Village Hall?
Yes, uh, so every year we usually shut down the village hall so that we can properly do our shredding and our inventory. So I'm proposing this year that we close down, um, for three days instead of two, because there's a lot to be done. August twenty third, twenty fourth, and twenty fifth. That is fair week, and generally.
Pretty quiet.
Pretty quiet anyways, so.
Wednesday through Friday?
Yes.
So we will still be here, it's just that the office won't be open for public.
It'll be closed to the public, yes. Each office would still be here to manage each of their offices and the shredd.
Should there be an emergency, we're still here. Right.
Okay.
All right, all in favor, I'd like to make a motion to approve, uh, closing Village Hall, August twenty third, twenty fourth, twenty fifth for inventory.
Second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. During our budget process, we had discussed raises for two individuals in our, uh, one in our highway department and a person in our wastewater department. So we have a resolution, whereas during the twenty three, twenty four village budget meeting, the Board of Trustees discussed a wage increase for Highway MEO Carl Dofino and wastewater plant mechanic Scott Ratchen. And whereas Carl Dofino currently makes twenty one dollars and twenty three cents per hour, Scott Ratchen currently makes twenty dollars and forty cents per hour. Whereas the Board of Trustees agreed to an hour increase of a dollar per hour for Carl Dofino and an hourly increase of two dollars and forty five cents for Scott Ratchen. And whereas both employees have worked for the village of Rhinebeck for seven years and have performed additional responsibilities that warrants the outside of the UPS contract, and whereas the union has agreed to these increases. Now therefore be resolved the village board to approve the hourly wage of twenty two, twenty three for Carl Dofino and the hourly wage of twenty two eighty five for Scott Ratchen effective June first, twenty twenty three. I'd like to make a motion to accept this resolution. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
So, very good. All right. Martina, I forgot to bring up David's name.
Leonard.
Leonard, I'm sorry, I'm so, I apologize for that. Do you have it?
Uh, not on my, I don't see it.
I didn't draw up a resolution, but letter Navar. Letter Navar. Uh, Carol Urban, who is the current ethics chair, uh, who, her term ended on May thirty first, and I interviewed three candidates who had applied to fill the empty position on our ethics committee. After the interview, we both agreed that, uh, Leonard Navarro was the best candidate and very suited for this job as to be appointed, so I'd like to make a motion to appoint Leonard Navarro to.
Navarez.
Navarez, I'm sorry, to our ethics board.
Second.
Village resident, nineteen years, bachelor professor.
Second.
Second. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
He's a, yeah, a good candidate. I was friends with his father, and that's how long I've lived here. Um, and Eleanor Pupko would have been a great candidate also, so just wanted to say that. She did apply.
Very good. Okay, now, all in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. Next on the resolution is, we normally just do this normally, the normal process, but I would like to make a motion from the Rhinebeck Fire Department investigating a meeting to approve Moisés Gomez for active probationary membership of the Rhinebeck Fire Department pending the background checks. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
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 So approved. Welcome to the fire department.
So Martina and I had something else. Uh, we approved that intern to, uh, look at the, do work on the waterline project. And then she, uh, didn't work out, so we, I tried to get another girl in from BART on Christmas break, and then we weren't really prepared because we had so many people taking days off and coming in and out, so. Just informally, or formally, I'd like to ask for approval for Juliette Seco. She's a, she just graduated from BART. She's a great kid, a great candidate. Swimmer, BART swimmer. She, swimmer of the year. Wow. She's studying environmental urban studies, just graduated, and then she's gonna take the LSAT and begin to, you know, be an environmental lawyer, so.
Met her today. Uh, we filled out already, just so everybody knows, because this came in at the last minute. We need to get her started. We backed her up so that she could get started because Grandpa are in here on Monday, and we were unaware of.
And I didn't get all the paperwork.
So we've gotten the paperwork done, and she's.
Did you agree on, on?
An hourly rate, that's my next question.
We agreed at this on, during budget, it was the fifteen dollars an hour for a hundred hours.
Okay.
We've actually, we voted on this like a couple times.
Yeah, we budgeted. I just didn't know what.
She's already hit the ground running. She's set up a tenant plan.
She's got a car.
She's got a car. She lives in Village Green. If you guys need her anything else.
I wanna meet her.
All right, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I need a second.
Second.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
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 All right. I'm gonna jump ahead a little bit because we have a person sitting here that, um, was patiently waiting, and it's been a long time, so I'd like to, um, Tom Trout is here to answer any questions, but I'd like to move ahead to the special request and bring up Porch Fest. Uh, Porch Fest is a yearly event. Uh, I'll just, I'm gonna summarize a lot, Tom, and then we'll ask if you have any questions for the board. Um, this is Julie, this event is usually held in September. Uh, this year there was a lot of conflicts with the event in terms of the date and time, so Porch Fest has agreed to change their date to October fourteenth for this year. We've met as, as a team, our emergency response coordinator, our police sergeant, our fire department, and myself, and our DBW, and we've crawled through their plans because Porch Fest is, does require a lot of coordination and security because they map the number of roads that we're closing, all right? And so we're still kind of working on finalizing that plan for everybody so that we know where the confines are because the last thing I want is for a car to come crashing through a crowd of three to four thousand people, uh, which is the projected number for people coming into this event. And so safety is my highest concern that we address that, so Sergeant Dunn has signed off, but we still have to work through the final logistics in terms of where we place things and how we place them, right? The fire department has signed off with EMS and providing portable EMS services and the ambulance services that we have, and how do we navigate if there is an issue?
This isn't reinventing the wheel, is it?
Well, it, it's not reinventing, but it's getting bigger. So when we talk about things getting bigger, we haven't reached that magic number. We're in a mass gathering yet, but we still need to make sure that it changes every year in terms of the streets they were using. If you remember, last year they closed off not doing black. This year they're thinking about maybe coming down the, cutting down the streets in subway, so it makes the center of it smaller, so they're working on those porches. And we also ran into problems in the past two years where there's been people inside the event area that wanted to leave. And it's my house, it's your house, and you wanna leave, and now we have barricades, and so we're working through all of those logistics, which we never did before, to identify people or maybe alternate parking places so that people can get to their car, and if they're at the event, still get out and go get a bite to eat or go visit friends and family somewhere, and they're not really interested in being here for the event. So we, new things get added every year, just like all of our other events as we learn and grow to it. So this is some of the stuff that we're working very closely with. Liz Mazarela has handed temporarily the baton to Nick Nuzzo and Tom Trout, uh, and that's who we're working with, who have a lot of security experience and are helping us immensely to make this plan safe for everyone. Having said that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Porch Fest for October fourteenth. Um, we've actually changed the end time from seven PM to six PM to allow more time pre-darkness because of the lateness of the year, so that people can get out safely before it gets dark. So things change, and things change a lot, and every time you go through this, we need to open up the book and check off all the blocks, and that's what we've been doing. So I'd make, like I said, make a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, any questions for Tom?
Um, if, I had a family member that wanted to was thinking about playing with his band in the Porch Fest. Everybody called.
Well, I'm a proxy to the proxy, so I'll have to look that up for you.
Call this.
You reach out to Nick. No, no, you go, go, go to Rick Nuzzo.
Yeah, Rick.
You know, we have a contact, but you can go through Tom to get the.
Yeah, Rick is out of town, so I'm just sitting with him today, and I'll text him whatever issues he has or questions.
They are still currently lining up the porches.
Yeah, it's gonna be, they're working, he's trying to deal with issues that were in the past. I guess like the musicians coming in and out with their vans is not gonna be allowed this year. They're gonna look for, um, larger golf carts that can be used in lieu of using carts or using vans, you know, big vans. Uh, we're gonna be shuttling back and forth with the, the equipment back and forth, and that could, you know, lessen the problem. Also, um, sensitive issues with the residents within the area, we're gonna be, we're looking into shuttling them back and forth and helping them address their needs, that's the getting in and out, you said. Uh, you know, it could be a number of times during the event, so, uh, Rick was having a doubt, maybe that one of the top areas.
We're really gonna minimize the number of cars that are in this area during the.
And there was nothing at the Dutch County Fairgrounds that weekend. It looks like Sheik and Wool is the next.
No.
There is not. In fact, that's one of the things that they needed to do, and they went to the fairground and verified that.
Okay.
That's important.
Yeah.
Yep. That was on the checklist. Good question. And there will be food trucks? Right, and so food trucks?
Are you gonna continue to do the, um, the tables for like nonprofits and?
It sounds, I think it's gonna be the same, uh, uh, system that was implemented by Liz that's worked, you know, that has.
So do they still actually need approval? They all need pet those permits, which will still come through the village.
They need permit, you say?
Yes, any vendor.
Okay, okay. Uh, yeah, nonprofits, small stuff.
Yes, nonprofits.
Okay.
And food trucks?
Yes, right, and vendors.
Any other questions for Tom? I promised I'd get him out of here by eight o'clock, so that's what I'm.
I don't know, it's good to be on this side of the.
All right, we have a motion, a second. All in favor approving Rhinebeck Porch Fest twenty twenty three for October fourteenth. Say aye.
Aye.
Tom, if you could go get that pizza now since I moved you up, it'd be great. That was a deal, right?
Yeah.
No pepperoni, please.
No, Sagittar.
All right. Okay, let's talk about Locust Hill, Vanessa.
Yeah.
And the work that Time Bond did on the wastewater capacity.
Yes, so, um, Brand, Kyle, and I all met with Brandy to look at a draft, um, of this document on the cloud. Um, this document summarizes the capacity research that Time Bond did. Um, and basically, they, they took, um, the, you know, the proposed capacity that Locust Hill would, would be using. Then they looked at what are the, um, current open buildable lots in the village and what capacity would those heat up? Um, that are, those lots already being on the existing wastewater treatment system. Um, and then they looked at, okay, well, what's left over vis a vis what potentially would it look like for the, the village to add more density? Uh, we discussed, um, you know, where sewer line expansion would make most sense. Um, and at the end of all of it, it looks like there really is enough capacity to say yes to Locust Hill. So Brand and I are making that recommendation.
From, just from the sewer, we're wearing our sewer hats.
Right, we're wearing our sewer hats, ew. Uh, we're wearing our sewer hats, yeah. Um, from that point of view, looking at the map, looking at the data, there is excess capacity to serve Locust Hill and to meet the future needs of the village. Um, you know, this is.
Within reason.
Within reason.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Um, we are proposing that we move ahead and draft a memorandum of understanding with, uh, that we would deliver to Kearney, so Brand and I would like to do that. Um, we would bring it back to the board for approval before delivering it to him. Um, and that would include the hookup fee that we would charge him. It would include that it would be his responsibility for the design, um, and the build of like how it would connect into the wastewater treatment plant, um, including the mapping involved in that. Um, and furthermore, a condition would be that we work with the town to create an extraterritorial district.
Would that include all properties in the town that are on our sewer system?
Mm-hmm. Well, we're under, we're under contract with, uh, the Village Green, so that might.
The green is not the town.
Yeah, the gardens.
The garden. And, which, I think we should grow the water. And, which, I think we should throw the water, the water district into this.
Why not? Because I absolutely agree that we need to do this because we have no financial way to go after and collect fees for any of these things.
And I don't, I don't want to point to a strong arm tactic, but we, it gives us a little ammunition to bring the town board to the table.
And by the way, they're in favor of doing it. They've always have been in favor of doing this.
Today.
Right.
Pardon?
Today.
The last time I asked, I, I will go by the last time I asked, they were in favor of doing it.
Yeah, I've learned not to trust that.
Right. But let's be clear, this is for 17,600 gallons per day.
And you know, it's going to be less than that.
Well, there's the theoretical and there's the actual, like our theoretical is 205,000 gallons of, or 260,000 permitted, but the actual is really 184,000 gallons of what we see on a normal rate, so...
Right. What do you report for the permitting, because of the buffer?
Right, right. And just, and just to remind everybody, once we get to that 90%, we're capped out, right? Because they recommend that you would keep that 10% in reserve. So we're not going to be at that 90% with this, so we're still with underneath the level to be able to make this work.
Yeah, we're not at the 90% with this and with the projected additions, correct, compliance.
Or we could have another Locust Hill or something like that.
Right.
You know, I mean, we, we're kind of, we're counting, kind of counting goblins on a pinhead, but...
Oh, I've never heard of that.
That's a good one.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, it's, it's, you could add another Locust Hill within the village, right? Still.
Yeah, and still.
Still at 90%.
Yeah.
Well, it's like you said, it's a reserving 10% of the plant capacity of the 26,000 gallons per day and reserving flow for existing parcels in the sewer service area of 4,000 gallons per day. The remaining available capacity is still at 46,000 gallons per day.
So...
When I said we're wearing our sewer hat, what, what I was kind of wanting to point out was that we haven't done SEAGAR yet as an interested party, so if there's some environmental impact concerns that come up...
Do we have to do that or would Karenie do that?
The town has to do that.
Yeah, but we're an interested party, yeah.
Oh, so, oh, right, got it.
We, we...
Oh, SEAGAR for the actual site plan process.
Yeah, this has nothing to do with that, so that might raise some red flags that as a board we don't like, right? So what I'm saying is this is just a...
Just for the letter of, you know...
This is a capacity.
Yeah, yeah, I get that.
This is a willingness to support letter that we need to get the current, that we need to supply to develop.
Is there a recommendation on a hookup fee?
Yeah, but we all have that, and that's all from about a year ago, so...
Delaware did some calculations.
Yeah, so step one is to draft a willingness to support.
Okay, but does the willingness to support include the potential hookup fee or not?
Yeah, we, we, yeah, we need to put these things in there.
Yeah, okay, so we're going to...
Because it's sort of like a lot, this is closer to a letter, that, that thing I did didn't have any legal, you know? That was just for zoning, but this is more of a, a letter of intent, which still isn't enforceable, but it's closer.
Right, but the more information in it for Karenie, the more...
Yeah, yeah, you don't want to...
Yeah, we don't want to surprise them, anything.
Right.
Okay.
Right. So I'd like to make a motion, Brandt and I will forward with drafting that and bringing that back to the board.
Second.
Any discussion?
We need to have a lawyer look at it.
Yeah.
All papers say aye? Aye.
Aye.
Wow.
Workforce housing, yeah!
Lydia, would you like to talk about Six Mulberry, please?
Sure, Six Mulberry, there's very little to report on at the moment. The developer has been sending information to our engineer. We just put a bunch of it on the Six Mulberry webpage. Our engineer is in the process. We saw a draft letter, we saw a draft comment letter last week that needs to be updated, so there should be a, a letter going from our engineer back to the developer at some point in the next two to three weeks, I would imagine. And once we have that letter, then we'll get onto the webpage. The process is underway, it is by no means complete.
Okay, thank you. Rick, is there anything else you want to say about the abstracted version that you haven't said?
No.
Thank you.
Thank God.
I'm here, y'all.
Don't go jump off a bridge. All right, Vanessa.
Don't be jumping on that to look out there.
You want to talk about, you and Rick combined, Safe Roots to School?
Yeah, so just, um, just an update about this project. We had walked the potential Safe Roots to School route with an engineer from a firm. And this firm called GPI suggested that a process could be that we work with them, they do a preliminary plan, a preliminary estimated budget, and a grant application, all for free. And then in the event that we get the grant, we're then obligated to work with them. And so after some discussion amongst ourselves, we're like, well, how does that really work? That doesn't, you know, we just wanted to know more about this process because getting a grant application and kind of like a very preliminary at a glance budget for the project seems, all for free, seems great. So we did get some follow-up materials from this firm, and he said, okay, well, here's what you do, you go out for an RFP for a firm such as his, to do this sort of grant work for free, and then you're obligated to work with them. And there's a list of actual firms that have experience with this particular Safe Roots to School type of funding that we could send it to in particular. So then we look at these various applications, and we, then we choose who we want to work with. So there is this, this like public process for selecting the firm.
Like an RFP even though we're not spending any money yet, right?
Well, we would have to do, we would have to do, the, the way it works is that the state by region, so a regionate, has a list of engineering firms for which this is an acceptable, yes, for, for which this is an acceptable practice. And I should say that what he did say is that it's unlikely there's two levels of funding, there's federal funding and there's state funding. Said we're unlikely to receive federal funding, don't...
Are we too small or something?
It's mostly targeted at communities in much greater need, so we're not going to stuck out there. But there is the TMQ traffic, uh, what is it?
TMAC?
TMAC, TMAC, right, which is a state level funding, which they thought would be a good thing to go for. That is released every two to three years. The next potential opening would be this fall of '23. The last one was '21. And so basically, the situation would be, we'd have to put together an RFP, send it out to these firms that are pre-approved. The conditions of the RFP are that y'all are going to, y'all are going to write the grant, and if y'all get the grant, then you do get to do the engineering design and, and build work. And it's only for, he sent us the list of the firms that are, are approved in regionate to do this kind of work.
So, so what Rick and I would really like to do is, is move ahead with that so that we're not, you know, on our heels when this grant is announced. And we would like to talk to Karen about like, you know, using our CHIPS money if and when we actually get, you know, if we were awarded the grant, how presumably there would be a match, so we just want to talk.
We are committed to 217,000 of the CHIPS money for our center.
I don't, we don't have any available CHIPS.
I'm not sure.
This would be...
This would be upcoming if, if...
So being in 20...
After March of 2024.
2024, yeah, so I was going to say, just to make everybody aware, once you go down this road, you start getting obligated and you have an RFP out, let you say, we're not going to do it, and then we're not going to do the grant, because we did not budget money for it in the '23, '24 year. There is...
Well, we wouldn't start construction until...
But even the engineering, if you go out for the grant, it has to cover the engineering, the grant's not going to cover 100%.
No, 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 this is actually, that's not the way this is set up. This is basically when they apply, it's to cover there, it covers the engineering and covers the design bill, it's all one big package. And that's because these guys are pre-approved.
Then how much are we, how much do we have to pony up?
I would have to go, we would have to go there, so we're going to, we're going to, we're going to...
So all my point is '23, '24 fiscal year, we don't have any money to pony up for.
Got it.
Yes.
I did have just one question because the funding source is pretty important, and I don't know if it's like DEC that the state is now requiring you to get, go out to bid or go out and get quotes for engineering, so I don't know if that's going to...
This would be, this clearly, this is, he gave, he gave us the chapter and verse and showed us what we could do. It's, no, it's done, and so basically...
Because I know that with the DEC, we have to, you know, it's new as of December.
This is part of the TMAC program that allows them to do that, and Kingston did it as well. And I guess it has to do with these firms that are, what, eight? I'd say firms that were approved.
Okay. Yeah, but we'd love to meet with you, Karen, maybe once after all the, you know, the year and...
It's settled, right?
Who can talk about us?
It's kind of a conversation, you know?
Great to have a conversation, it's great to have, but I don't think we should, I'm not ready to make a commitment myself today to say that we can start the...
There's nothing, there's nothing committed to, right? Nothing yet, but we need to explore, that's where it's at, it's their exploration.
We just wanted to keep everybody informed about, you know, the process.
Yep. Okay. A small footnote, the comprehensive plan committee is coming out hard, hard for a sidewalk district, so the sidewalks are something that is going to be one of the top priorities coming out of the comprehensive plan, so just FYI.
What is a sidewalk district?
A sidewalk district is basically the same as like a sewer district or a water district.
The village takes over.
The village basically takes over the sidewalks. And with sidewalk districts comes potential for grants to update sidewalks and all the rest of it, so, you know, that, that conversation is happening at the comp plan, I just thought you all should know. Obviously, nobody's approved anything, but they have 100% proof that that's going to be a recommendation that's going to come out, so...
And I just want to say, these are recommendations, we have to accept the recommendations and adopt them and hold a public hearing.
Is it like a benefit district where they pay to get into the...
So basically, basically taxpayers, so property owners, like if you are a part of the sidewalk district in the same way that it feels like you're part of the water district, when you get your water, like you pay a fee to get the water.
Right, so it is like, it's a bit like a benefit.
Yeah, it's exactly the same.
It's a rate pair.
And what it does is the theory behind it is that it actually spreads the burden of, you know, because like right now, I have to pay for everybody who uses my sidewalk, which is actually, just because of where I live, it's a lot of people, whereas people, you know, who don't live near the center of the village, so it's an idea of just like spreading the burden, but it also, the idea behind it is it also puts the burden onto the village so that the village is in charge of making sure that the sidewalks are safe and appropriate, so, you know, that's a different conversation.
And if you don't have a sidewalk, you're, you're going to be...
You're, you're going to be charged, you're going to be part of the district.
You're going to be charged for someone, to help someone else, to help someone else's sidewalk.
To walk on a sidewalk elsewhere in the village.
Yeah.
Or, or, and probably...
I mean, also the sidewalk district is obviously going to have its own boundaries, but, you know, the idea behind it is to get our sidewalks up and running.
Well, I mean, if you think of it, I, I paid for somebody's road that I don't drive on, right? Never drive on that road.
Or the MTA commuter tax or something.
Exactly, yeah.
TBD.
It's right.
TBD.
I think it's a great idea to have a conversation.
It has been done, it's been done.
TBD.
I just wanted to know what it was.
So it wasn't on agenda, so let's keep moving.
No, but the point of my story was that good sidewalks are something that I think we're going to have to be paying attention to in the next couple of years, so...
Yep, absolutely. Okay, grants, I want to make sure everybody's available, you've all been informed that our 2020, we applied to our semi-person who came out with a grant request. We got two days' notice, Karen and I hustled, actually Karen did most of the hustling in terms of putting together a technology grant application, and this would cover upgrading all of our desktops and laptops that we have as part of the village to Microsoft Office 11, because 10 is being sunset in probably the next year. And so we applied for a grant that will cover the replacement of all of those desktops and replacement of this wonderful sound system that we're using here today to bring that up to current standard as well.
Replacement of the computers or just of the Microsoft 11?
No, the whole desktop. Yep, not, because the software isn't, doesn't work on the new desktops. So we're going to have to upgrade the desktops.
New software doesn't work on the whole desktops.
11 doesn't run on our current desktops.
Correct.
And we've licensed 11 though through PCA, right?
They need faster chips.
We don't like, we license it.
We license, okay.
They just do the installation.
Oh, okay.
So upgrading the desktops and the laptops to become...
Any, any lap, any, any technology device that we have that doesn't work for Windows 11 will be replaced.
Okay.
With, if we get the grant.
Okay.
Okay? And that's if we get the grant. And the next, Lydia?
Yep, I applied for a grant with the Thomas Thompson Trust for the comprehensive plan, which they granted in part. My application was for $25,000 and they granted this a $10,000 grant, so I'm delighted to make that announcement.
Oh, really?
Yep, their, their focus is on housing affordability in the village, and so they wanted to, they were, they were delighted with the work that the comp plan committee is doing on that issue.
Wonderful. We'll take it.
Well, just, I'm sorry, just as we're doing this, and you, you know, that you got that grant, correct?
We, yes, we have, yeah, I thought, I thought I sent you the thing.
Okay, no, no, I'm just saying because I'm going to just do a budget amendment to increase that line item by 10,000 and then increase the revenue line item that we're going to receive it by 10,000.
Oh, great.
Just a little housekeeping.
Yeah, yeah, we definitely got it, we just, I don't know if we actually got it in chat.
I don't know if you want to do it together or separate, that budget amendment for that.
Oh, you want to do it now? Okay, great. Everything she just said, so moved.
Okay.
Second. For Tina.
Martina.
To increase the expense and increase the revenue for the comprehensive plan grant. And if you want, accounting is all going to you when I find it. Okay, good.
All papers say aye?
Aye.
Very good.
Thank you.
Vanessa, let's talk about the logical restoration grant.
Right, so as was mentioned earlier, I did get two grants, totally $300,000 for the compost project. I am looking for a Plan B, but the issue is that one of these grants, the ecological restoration grant, was stipulated that it needs to be used within 2023 calendar year. So even if I come up with a Plan B, I don't think we're going to meet that deadline, so that means we need to return this money. As you all know, we did incur some, some costs when we're doing Time Bond as we will report the town planning board. So I'm proposing to the foundation, the New World Foundation, that we return the grant money minus the expenses that we have incurred. You know, don't, don't shoot me for trying, we'll see if they, if they go for that. I hope they take, take, take mercy on us. Not that it's an incredible amount of money, I think, I basically need to get the invoice, the final invoices from the town planning board and from Time Bond. So I don't have those amounts in here, it's just I need to gather those invoices with Chrissy and make sure everything from the town planning board has come in before I send this letter. So I don't know, do I need, do I need a board vote to send this letter once the final numbers are in, or...
You're asking for money back, right?
I don't think so.
We don't think so.
All right, just wanted you to be informed, that's what I'm, that's what I'm doing.
Yeah, I mean, it's very clear, I mean, the grant says this money is for the development of a compost facility.
Right.
This money was spent for the development of a compost facility, so hopefully they'll...
Understand me.
Side with our logic.
Yeah, definitely.
So bottom line is we're going to turn, we're going to, we're going to send the letter.
Yep.
All right, special request, we already covered Porch Fest. Martina, you want to talk about fall training at NiCOM?
Sure, so annually Karen and I attend the NICOM Fall Training School. This year it will be September 18th through September 22nd. So not only are we requesting the fourth permission to attend this year, but simultaneously the deputy clerk will be out of the office that same week. So we're also requesting that the offices of the clerk, treasurer, watering store be closed for them.
Building, building plan and zoning remain open.
As will court.
In court.
And then side note, DPW superintendent will be here Wednesday on, so, just all not here.
Just like shut down the village?
But we'll, I mean, we'll.
We'll still be available via email, not the watering store department per se, but.
There's nobody.
Means there's nobody downstairs, which makes me a little concerned about.
I will say we did do the same thing two years ago.
We're gonna, I'm not here for the year before. How'd it go?
We, fine, and I've been here, I cover a lot.
Okay.
And so there'll be signs on the doors and signs everywhere and notifications put out, but this is not a new, something new.
Okay.
But you're right, we're not open to the pub, we're, it's hard for the public.
Yeah, because we're open to them, but we're not here to.
And this doesn't align with any billing period, so that what does.
And it's the week after the meeting, which is perfect.
Yeah, so, you know, there's not gonna be an influx of people coming in to pay water bills, wastewater bills.
Right.
Taxes will be over and done with, all of that stuff, which is really keeping us very busy and in a lot of times will not be occurring during these, during these days.
Okay.
You're all more welcome to come in and sit in the chair if you would like. All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve the clerk and treasurer to attend NICOM training and close our clerk's office downstairs, our village clerk, our treasurer clerk and our deputy clerk's office, who will be on vacation at the same time for 9/18 to 9/22.
Second.
Discussion. You don't like it, but all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. These are valuable things that tend, thank you two for going, because I think the value you bring back is worth the time. I'd like to make a motion to approve minutes for 4/25/23.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Martina, you saw my notes.
Did you email this? I have not yet, but I will check it, thank you.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for 5/9/23.
Second.
Discussion.
Martina, I just gave you comments on them.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, Rick, let's talk about tree commission.
Okay, the tree commission had a very successful planting on Saturday, April 29th, despite the wet weather and the dirt being soiled, being wet and heavy and compact. I'd like to thank volunteers, Chris Hall, Mary Burns, Kristin Chabner, Umberto Aguero and Maya Monks, Kirk Krakenbush, Michael Florenza, Andrew Hunter, Owen McGetrick, Carly, Fr- Carly?
Frakerully.
Frakerully, there's no one else. Vanessa Bertozzi? And Gary Bassett. Thank you so much. So they were out, they were out planting and the weather was very successful. The commission is also looking to expand its reach some and is setting up a series of new subcommittees, which will have to do with watering. So we need to be green bags on the trees that we've planted, making sure those trees are watered regularly, because that is one of the most important things you can do for these new trees. We do ask the homeowners to do it, but sometimes they're out of town or away. There's a pruning committee, which will go out and, for the young trees that we've planted, sucker the trees, limit them up, basically prune back as necessary. A group that will do a collection of our various items, the tree guards, the gator bags, the stakes, the ties, basically collect all that stuff and make sure it's all down at the highway garage. We have an inventory database, which I also said that Pat Evans has really been working very hard to really get a handle on and figure out how we can use it best. He will be presenting to the entire commission within the next month or so. And we're starting to use this to track, track permit requests, track orders, see what we can do. This can really be an integral, a very helpful tool, and Pat's really been the person who's been working us through that. Though we'd also like to do.
Sorry, just not interrupt, but is, is there anybody who's employed by the village who has access to that database and knows how to use it?
You can.
And should there be?
Well, we've been through this, because it's been to the, to the, to the commission, commissioners to keep and run and maintain the database.
It's one of the reasons we expanded the commission.
Okay.
And the thought was that Brian doesn't have the time to do it, Martina doesn't have the time to do it. So it's gonna fall through commissioners.
It feels like it would fall into someone in the highway department, honestly, but I, okay, never mind.
We expanded the tree commission.
We expanded the commission, and, and that is now, Pat is actually trying to, is helping out the rest of us.
But Ricky has access to it.
I know, yes, there's, there's a couple levels of access, I'm an administrator, Pat's administrator. You have guest access if you want to look at it.
Right.
But you can't alter it at all.
Yeah, yeah.
But there are interesting modules inside the software. So for instance, so we can track a tree application comes in, the permit is accepted, it's gone out, and it's a year to use it, what happens to the tree, we can actually be more, more, yeah, more aggressive about being able to do that. And, you know, again, Pat has done a nice job in getting us together for that. Also, the committee is looking to do more educational school outreach. So hopefully working with the various students about planting, about planting trees and other environmental issues. So just, we did expand the commission and it's really often running in a much different directions. Yeah, much different, to the, much to the credit of the commissioners.
Fantastic.
And that's all for now.
Okay, Vanessa?
Yeah, on a related note, Michael Florenza, who's on the tree commission, is also on the climate smart task force, and he's been helping me as we are putting together our first village government operations greenhouse gas emissions inventory. And this is through the CAFI grant that we got as part of nine municipalities. We're gonna be making a presentation of that draft report to the, to the group, to the cohort of nine municipalities. And once it's finalized, I'm excited to be able to share that with public coming soon. Fun fact related to the tree inventory is there's actually a way, when you look at this dashboard, to see the, the environmental benefits in a sort of quantified way of our street trees. And so there's a metric of basically like the carbon dioxide reduction power of our street trees, but it's over a 20-year time span. So even though they said it's not really accurate to just divide that by 20 to get to an annual number, because trees grow, they're small, different species of trees, different health of the trees. But anyways, it's divided anyways, just as, as like a fudgy number. And so fun fact, the amount of carbon dioxide reduction our street trees accomplish in one year is equivalent to the amount of, of carbon emissions of village hall for a year.
So our tree, our trees offset this building?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's pretty cool.
That's it?
Yeah. I am sort of surprised it's not more. Is it because this building is higher, because the trees are not as much like they are?
I mean, we're just talking the street trees that are in the inventory, there's additional trees in the village.
Like that, that entire tree?
Oh, the whole trees, we got it.
That's the one back, just our street, those are.
Just the street trees, oh, those are cool.
Right, our trees, we don't, the other, other private trees are not in the inventory.
Yeah, that's right, so.
So just think, if we improve the footprint of this building, how much more we can offset?
Yeah.
Right.
Think about it.
Wow.
Yeah.
It's amazing.
And.
We can't afford the police department.
So, yeah, so I'm excited to show that to you, data's always fun to look at, so coming soon. Cool. I also just wanted to mention the EV charging stations. We noticed some errors in the dashboard, the charge point dashboard. So I'm on the, you know, I'm on the hook with customer support. They owe me a quote for coming out and doing repairs, sending a tech. If they have to replace some equipment, it's gonna cost probably about $3,000.
Wow.
But this is why we budget for maintenance on these EV charging stations, so.
That's not like the program, that's not like the 1380.
No.
This is in addition to the 1380 for the program.
This is maintenance versus the software.
I think we just budgeted like a thousand for me, we budgeted 500 in two different accounts, but.
Yeah, we'll look at it. Let me check with you, and once I get the numbers from them, they're better.
It's so interesting that ChargePoint doesn't pay for their own maintenance.
Well, we're out of warranty, that's the structure. Because like if you're under warranty.
And then we also get the money from it, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's not like they're getting money.
Yeah.
I mean, they take a commission, I'm sure, but, yeah. Okay.
Yep. Yeah, there's stuff I, I think I mostly mentioned in previous updates today.
Lydia, anything else you want to say about comp plan?
Minutes are all on the webpage. They met on, they met last Thursday, June 8th, they're not gonna meet again until July 13th. They're probably gonna go back to once a month now that they've gotten through the bulk of the contentious recommendations. But yeah, they're just chugging along, chug, chug, chugging along, it's exciting stuff.
Actually, they're doing a great job.
Yeah, they're doing an amazing job, they're really doing an extraordinary job.
The amount of, the detail that they're getting into is just.
Mm-hmm.
One, just.
Yeah, the conversation is being held in a really successful way too, so it's, it's working. So excited, it's working.
Okay, we're gonna move forward. Unfortunately, as time goes on, we always have people that come and go, and in this case, I'm sad to say that we're losing two employees this month. One is our highway MEO Dante Knox, who sent in a letter of resignation effective on June 2nd. Dante moved on to another position. And we have our chief wastewater operator, Brian Macomo, who also sent in a letter of resignation as effective June 22nd, 2023. Both these, both these gentlemen have performed well for the village of Rhinebeck. They provided a valuable service, whether it be highway or wastewater, and we wish them all the luck in the world as they look forward to their new ventures or their next chapter in life, and hope it be as successful, and we're sorry to see them leave. So I'd like to make a motion to accept the resignation for highway MEO Dante Knox and chief wastewater operator, Brian Macomo.
Second.
Discussion.
Re- ruffly, yeah. Re- re- ruffly, it's easier to say ruffly than re- ruffly.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, as part of that, there are the vacation buyouts that have been approved by our treasurer. We switch to our standard mode of operating here, this is employee number six and employee 30, who have requested vacation buyouts. I'd like to make a motion to approve their vacation buyouts.
Second.
We're obligated to do this, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's part of our contract. I don't think we're gonna say no. In addition, we are also obligated to pay out for comp time, which is over and above the vacation time.
You're paid.
Yep, and I'd like to make a motion to approve the request by Brian Macomo to buy out his accumulated comp hours as well, which I believe are 51 hours, was it, Martina?
Yes.
I thought he was only allowed to, they weren't allowed.
Well, yes, we're working on correcting that across the board.
Got it.
They can only accumulate 40, and after 40, they get paid.
Right.
And so unfortunately, we've had some discrepancies and they've accumulated and didn't use or asked to use and didn't take.
Okay.
Right, so I'd like to make a motion to approve Brian Macomo's comp time payout as well.
Second.
We're obligated to do this, all in favor, say aye.
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 But we have to go through the motion.
Obligated for resignations, but not for general.
Pardon?
Obligated for resignations, but not for general.
No, no, they can buy out.
Comp time, no, we can't.
For comp time, yes, we have.
At any point in time, no. Vacation, yes.
Yes, but as we discussed today, they, we have to pay out any comp time.
For a resignation, yes.
Yes, for a resignation.
That was the point.
Right, oh, yes, you're making this thinking.
Yes.
But my motion was based on a resignation.
Right, no, he's adding on to that we're required.
Yeah, okay. In addition to this, so now we need to hire some people, and it's always looked forward to doing this. We need to hire a new highway person. I'd like to make a motion that we go out to hire a highway laborer for our highway department.
Second.
How long?
Oh, at a rate of $20 per hour, sorry.
And how long's the opening for?
I'm asking.
Well, I'm asking, well, let me ask you a question, how have you been with response rates?
I haven't posted anything, because you guys just know.
No, no, of course not, but in your past experience, as we've advertised for things, what has been.
30 days, 45 days?
Generally 30, is what we usually do, but it all depends on.
Any five days.
How, highly you need somebody, how immediately you need somebody. But yes, so especially if you put it on indie, we get a pretty good response.
So you think 30 days is enough?
And just remember, the longer you, the longer you put it out, the longer we can have to wait to.
I understand, I understand, well, I mean.
Right, because we basically, you have to wait till the notice is out and then schedule interviews and then bring it to the board.
Right, I mean, you think two weeks is enough to harvest enough?
I sure hope so, yeah.
So I mean, we could do it till like.
The thing is, if you don't get anybody in two weeks, you can just open it back up.
So like there's June 30th is a Friday, July 7th is a Friday, July 14th is a Friday.
So how long is it to June 30th, there's only like.
June 30th is like two and a half weeks.
Yeah, so I'd like to make the motion that we keep it open for a highway laborer to start at $20 an hour and the position to be advertised up to June 30th.
Second.
There's a 10-day period from within.
So we talked to the union already, and we can run this in parallel, they've agreed.
Okay, we're running it in parallel, we're both in there, okay.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, now we also have to go through the issues of a wastewater operator. Did that fill our situation? So let me, I'd like to make a motion to approve a wastewater operator trainee for the wastewater department, because we currently have a person who was in the system, who is, is by contract to complete within 18 months, they were hired in November of last year. But once they've been here for a year, they're eligible to sit for the exam. They need a year to sit for the exam, he's scheduled for two courses, he needs a third course. So we've worked diligently to find alternative ways for, to improve their ability to get testing, and there's online capabilities that they've been updated to. So we think we can accelerate the in-house training for one of our current operator trainees to get certified. It's a requirement that he do it for his job anyways. And if we get that certification, I'm hoping, and now we have CAMO, it's all kind of related here, that CAMO covers this, we get our internal person certified, and we hire in from the bottom and promote from within.
And you mentioned that CAMO would actually help train our guys.
They will give them supervision and training, the process and.
Right.
Yeah, you know, I mean, you didn't speak to me about this, even though I'm the liaison, and it's, we really, really need a chief wastewater operator. And I think we should post for a chief wastewater operator. We run the, it's an extremely difficult exam. You know, Karen can attest to how difficult the exam is, because she passed it, but, sorry.
Karen, you want some?
We run the risk of having three employees who are chasing a license. And I feel really strongly that we should, we, there's another issue. We also need an assistant wastewater operator. But if you recall from last summer, you don't have to be a 2A to be, we can actually hire a 1A for an assistant operator. So that's an easier get.
Unfortunately, there's no civil service job description for assistant wastewater operator. There's an assistant water operator, but there's not an assistant wastewater operator in civil service.
Well, that's complicated, because the state regs suggest that you need an assistant operator, I don't know. They can violate the.
Well, they're not in harmony and we can't have that position, because it's not available in Dutchess County.
Well, we need, we need to straighten that out then, with Dutchess County, that's not, that's not fair. But what I'm saying is, it's an easier path for one of those two guys that we already have to get a 1A.
And.
But I want to advertise for a chief, and if we have to go to an executive session to talk about, you know, the players.
I don't think this is an executive session.
It's definitely executive session material, we should have talked about it, because we're gonna end up talking about the truth about the failings or merits of the people that we have on staff.
No, I'm not talking, I'm talking about hiring somebody right now, we're not talking about.
A trainee, a trainee, right.
We're talking about hiring, motion is to approve a wastewater operator training, which are DPW...
Why did you make a motion? Why didn't we talk about whether, you never even asked me if we needed a trainee or not.
I sent it out.
You shut me out, man.
I did not shut you out. I sent emails out to the board.
I said we're going to need to talk...
And you have the opportunity to have the discussion.
And what did I say in the email response? I said we need to talk about this.
And I said it's on...
I didn't say in front of the community.
And they said it's on the agenda.
Yeah, it should be an executive session. And you won't even let people things on the executive session, so I'm not going to bring that up again.
But Frank, why can't we just talk about it?
Because we have to talk about the merits or the quality of the people that we have as far as their ability to take the exam. Do you want me to go on and tell you more about that?
So we approved, we hired a person and gave him an 18-month time period to get approved.
If he doesn't pass the exam, we don't have a chief and we have three employees.
So why don't, why do we have to hire an additional person right now? We have the CAMO person coming in to tide us over until this person can pass or can't pass the exam. And at that point, we could make a decision about hiring in, whether it's a chief operator or a trainee.
I think that cuts us a little short on Scott.
We need a couple of weeks to talk about this. Zach, or Gary, you and Kyle, we should talk about this. We can, we can, we can, we can toll this discussion for two weeks.
I mean, let's, let's see if we can...
We don't have to make up our mind right now. This is a big deal, man.
So I do, I do have a question. And this was, and I guess we'll, when we hired folks, because this has been a problem in the past, we said in terms of employment, you must get your certification after X and such. If they fail to get their certification, what happens to them?
Do you think either they're no longer employed or we do, we've done before and reduce them down to a wastewater mechanic?
Or they could get an easier classification and become a, a different operator.
But we don't have a position to fill for a different classification right now.
So, but...
Gary, I guarantee you that we have not...
But until this point, we haven't actually laid someone off for failure to get, to pass the exam. And so I, I, I agree with a combination of what's going on between Vanessa and Brandt. I think we can table this conversation for a few weeks at least so that Brandt, Gary, and Kyle can get together and have a conversation about this. But I also think that, you know, we, if we need a laborer, we hire a laborer. If we don't, but like we should sort of see if we can get away with not having, you know, a third employee until, you know, the one that's on deck has the opportunity to take the exam. You know, if we only need four to six hours of, you know, chief operator...
That's not true. I, I mean, I gave you this like a month ago. It's...
The thing that, the thing that I read said that we only need two weeks of chief operator time in our, the thing that I read from the state said that our plan...
Okay, I sent you something from the state and it, and it gave all the duties that a chief wastewater operator has to accomplish.
And it said that it can be completed inside two hours.
And you can't do that in six hours a week.
Okay.
That's part of this discussion. I'm going to have to bring this up again.
Well, no, that's fine, you can bring it up again.
Just like I brought up, last year I had to explain like three or four times that a 1A would be...
The same document that you handed us that said these are all the things that they have to do also said that these could be completed within two hours a week.
That's incorrect.
Okay, well, then I'll, I look forward to reading the actual...
No, I look forward to you submitting that to me because that is just, it's just...
That is the document that you showed us.
Find that language and I'll, I'll tell you what it really means. I don't know...
And DEC has signed off on letting us CAMO run under their license for six hours per week.
Did you talk to BJ?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
You know?
But that's great for now, Gary, but that's not...
And it's a long time.
I, I, I need to understand something. If the DEC is letting us run this plan...
For now.
Not for now, at all. If the DEC is letting us run this plan at all, under four to six hours a week of waste, of chief wastewater operator time...
What are you talking about? We have a full-time waste, chief wastewater operator. Where did that come from?
Okay. Starting, let's just say, starting July 1st, when Brian is no longer here...
July, June 22nd.
Starting June 23rd, when Brian is no longer here, the DEC is allowing us to run our wastewater plant with only four to six hours a week of chief operator time. So I don't know how...
For now.
I don't know how they can...
That is not a good solution.
I don't know how they can allow us to do that if that is not enough time for a chief wastewater operator to do his job. So what I'm trying to, I'm trying to round this square. I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand why the DEC will allow us to have someone for four to six hours a week if it is not an appropriate amount of time. So I think it would be helpful...
Because it's for now, it's for now.
No, at all. The DEC is not going to allow us to do something for now.
You know, BJ actually allowed Scott to be listed as like the assistant, even though we didn't, and Scott's not licensed.
I'm not, I'm not worried.
He's like trying, he's trying to, he's been bending over backwards for us for years and we're not adequately staffed. I don't want to push the envelope on that. And I didn't talk to BJ, so I don't know what really, what really happened.
Three people that are adequately staffed to be able to run our wastewater treatment plant. We need a third person, right?
And even, even if we have the wastewater operator for six hours a week?
Let's just say that one person's out. We're suffering against, we only have one person.
This has created a problem and it's created a problem that came up tonight.
We need a, we need a third person. The reason I'm trying to push forward to get an operator trainee because I think it's going to take a long time to find somebody, even in a wastewater operator trainee. We went through a lot before, hired a person, they came in, they left, you know, et cetera, until we found what we, until we found what we got. These people are hard to find in this...
Brian is the only person we've groomed from within to get a license.
And now we're trying to groom another one. We bastard did that.
Okay, I've been here for 10 years, you know, with this. I'm in my 11th year and he's the only one we've managed to do this with.
And now we're trying to groom another one.
So again, I think we should...
And we're trying to get him certified.
We should continue to talk about this.
And we can move this forward. If you want to table this and wait, it's the longer we wait, the more trainee we acquire.
I'm just wondering if there's any, like, if there's any other like temp guy we could get from CAMO or something?
No, I've asked. They're, they're, they're giving us a person. They're not going to hire another person to give us a temporary up here and then, they don't have that capacity.
They don't.
Well, then can we table this maybe until the June 27th meeting to give you and you and Kyle and CAMO an option?
Kyle's totally on board with this already.
Okay.
DEC is on board with this.
CAMO's on board with it.
CAMO's on board with providing our coverage. And in fact, they both recommend it. This is a good way to go if you're trying to groom somebody, hire from with, promote from within, go to plant and move it in.
It's risk in the middle if you don't know.
I haven't been able to talk to Kyle, so...
Then talk to him.
Well, of course I'm going to talk to him, but I didn't know you were going to add one word to this, trainee, you know?
Frank, you saw the agenda. Agenda wasn't hidden, we put it out. If you didn't look, shame on you.
No, I said that we need to talk about this at the meeting. There's no shame on me. We're not supposed to have these...
We're talking about it.
Discussions amongst three or, three or more trustees from private...
I haven't talked any of these about since I was a...
So don't say shame on me. It was appropriate to bring it up tonight, but you're pushing...
And I put everything out.
Position, the trainee position, and I'm telling you, that's a huge mistake.
So Brandt, what I'm trying to figure out is if...
So that's not shame on me, Gary.
Is if CAMO and Kyle, regardless of Gary, if CAMO and Kyle believe that this is a good solution...
For now.
No, long-term was the solution, not...
The point of my story is I don't under, in my experience with government agencies, there's a difference, there is no difference between for now and forever. Like if it is legal now, then it is legal forever, otherwise it is not legal now.
Okay, so the regs don't mean anything. I mean, I'm telling you, I showed you...
Well, then which case then why are you freaking out about them?
This is the second or third time I've shown you these regs.
I know.
This idea of having a chief waste operator for a handful of hours a day is not a long-term solution. And I don't, can't imagine that BJ is saying that that's appropriate.
But I don't know where you're saying it's a long-term solution. We're trying to get it so by November, we get one...
Because we may end up with three, it's a, it's a very good chance we're going to end up with three trainees that can't pass their exam, or a mechanic and two trainees that can't pass their exam.
So then we have to let's...
Then we're going to, then we're going to have to make a decision if they can't pass the exam. Yeah. We put that condition on.
This guy just started six months ago and you're, you're, you're going to wait for him to become a chief?
He was hired, he was hired in November. The rules say he has to take three courses.
Seven months ago.
He has to take three courses. And he has to, then he, and within a year of experience of working on a 2A plant, he can sit for the exam.
And then if, this is the chief operator we're talking about. I agree, I agree that either him or, and we should be talking about this in the executive session, that either him or Scott could get their 1A or whatever the, that stopgap measure is.
So is your concern that like even if they pass, and that's not a guarantee, that they still don't have enough experience to, to hold that position?
Partially, but, but I'm concerned that they're going to pass.
That they're not going to pass.
That they're not going to pass because that's, that's, that's road tested here.
Well, there have been some concerns raised that, you know, part, part of the agreement, as I understood from CAMO, was that this person would actually be working with the employees to help them pass their exam, which apparently in the past was not done.
We don't know that that was done or not.
Well, according to the two employees...
And I don't think that's, that's not a talisman. What, did you see? We can't talk about what employees have said. It's not fair to everyone involved. This should be...
We're not making a statement about one employee itself.
I, I'm, I'm kind of, I'm kind of done with this.
All right, I have a motion, you know, it's up to you guys. I, I, I put it out.
I, I think we should table this until the, you two and Kyle can sit down and come up with some kind of agreement because this is insane, honestly.
Well, you're not helping the matter. You're...
What do you mean I'm not helping the matter? You guys are talking to each other and we're trying to come up with a solution or...
I know, but I, I sent you a description of what it requires to be a chief wastewater operator and you're saying six hours, six hours, six hours.
And then in that same description, it said this can be achieved within two hours a week. And so like the...
Okay, no, please send me that.
Please send me that. Now, now I'm done. I'm going to table, I'll, I'm going to...
Oh my gosh, oh my gosh.
We're going to table this to our next meeting.
Okay, great.
All right. We have quite a few people who agree. All right. On a happier note.
And Karen.
And birthday.
Sorry about that, Karen.
Yay, Karen!
I'd like to congratulate our treasurer, who just sat through three hours of meeting here with us. Putting up with it for eight years.
Eight years and three hours.
And three hours.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. I'd also like to congratulate water plant operator Tony Fada as being with us for 22 years. Started out in the highway department, moved to the water department, and it's just been a wonderful, a wonderful journey with him. And then highway MEO Tom Johnson, 22 years, believe it or not. Time flies fast. Congratulations to Tom Johnson for 22 years.
Amazing, amazing.
So I'd like to make a motion to adjourn at 9:04.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, guys.
Good night.
Thanks, Brandt.